Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Pickwa City Commission meeting for Tuesday, July 18th, 2023. Do you all stand with me and say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you please call the roll?
Mayor Pearson?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Heinz?
I would like to make a motion that should be excused from our meeting this evening.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She is excused.
Commissioner Vedder?
Here.
Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
So, I have an announcement to make. Due to the vandalism that occurred at the June 20th regularly commission meeting, the four public restrooms in this building are non-functional. If you have an emergency, please see the city manager. Thank you. The joint meeting with the Washington Township trustees.
It appears that the trustees are not here, so I would ask that we just table this matter or just move this matter to the first. We still have time on August 1st, but they do need to attend that meeting.
Okay, all right. So, do we need a motion to do so?
No, I think we're fine. I don't think we'll call the meeting since they're not here.
Okay, great.
Oh, we have a member here. Juan, do you know? Oh, with Juan, I think we can go forward, so. Come sit over here.
Scott Black.
You can get. I guess we can go forward.
Yes. So, we will have a joint meeting with Washington Township trustees this evening, and the first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the June 6th, 2023 joint meeting with Washington Township trustees and the Pickwa City Commission.
I'll move the approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes have been adopted. Resolution number R-90-23.
A resolution renewing a tax levy in excess of the 10 mil limitation for maintenance in operating of the Forest Hill Cemetery.
Your Honor, this is a resolution just renewing the tax levy that's already in place. It does not increase the levy. The levy's been on for many years. It was increased last time to .7 mil, and that's the amount that is going to continue for this or is going to be placed on the ballot again.
Okay, and it is for five years?
It is for five years.
Okay. Are there any concerns or questions from our commissioners? Any concerns or questions from our citizens? Hearing none, I'll need a motion.
You gotta come up to the podium and state your name.
Just from people commenting, nobody can hear the stuff on YouTube, and it's really hard to hear in the back of the room. So, just a suggestion that maybe we could speak into the microphones because everybody was having problems hearing it on TV, okay?
So, if you're talking like this, you can hear back in the back?
Yeah, so just, I'm sorry, just a suggestion from people that I've talked to, okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, I'll need a motion to adopt resolution.
Make a motion to adopt resolution number R-90-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Adopted. All right. Moving into our regular.
Should adjourn this, the joint session. Adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. All right, so we'll need a motion to adjourn from the joint meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the joint meeting with Washington Township trustee.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Yeah, thank you.
Next on the agenda is the recognition of volunteers. This list acknowledges those citizens who served on a city board or committee, along with citizens who supported city parks, projects, or community projects. This list is only the integral effort to recognize those who give their time to better Pickwa. Efforts will continue to gather more names and continue to appreciate those who serve. Citizens are encouraged to lock, to log their volunteer efforts and submit them to the park board for recognition. And at this time, we are going to share that list with you, the citizens. So, Jim, you want to start?
I will. The following people are being recognized for their service, and I will list their name and the organization for which they have served. The first is Pamela Hawes from Parks. Next is Dave Hefner from Powell. That's the Water Cleanup Project. Jim Herbert for Bike Safety Program. Brandon Hemsworth from Parks. A.J. Hickman from Powell. Emma Hickman from Powell. Xavier Hicks from Parks. Todd Holzinger from Powell. Nicole Engel-Poth from Kroger, the Burger King area. Mary Jenkins, Parks. Timmy Johnson from Powell. Brian Jure from Powell. Lance Keltch from Powell. Brittany Kensworth from Parks. Ruth Coon from Friends of the Parks. Alan Lang, Powell. Jeff Lang, Powell. Zach Lang, Powell. Caleb Luthman, Powell. Connie Malco, Powell. Jenny Malco, Powell. Sid Malco, Powell. Jason Metters, Parks. Haley Meshler, Parks. Stephanie Meyer, Parks. And that's the end of my list.
Okay, Chris?
My list starts with Lisa Minker, Parks. Brian Minnick, Parks. Samuel Moeller, Parks Department. Willie Monbet, Powell. Gage Myers, Powell. Samantha Myers, Powell. Joe Napol, Powell. Doug Neecamp, Parks. Kathy Oda, Powell. Jim Oda, Powell. James Owens, Powell. Rahith Padmaras, Powell. Kathy Patton, Powell. Rich Patton, Powell. Ashley Paul, Powell. Josh Paul, Powell. Cindy Pearson, Friends of the Parks. Paula Peters, Powell. Scott Phillips, Powell. And Suzie Phillips, Powell.
And I will read Colin Poth, Kroger, Burger King area. Mario Prestifilio Poe, Powell. Julie Razor, Powell. Logan Razor, Powell. Scott Razor, Powell. Shelley Reese, Parks. Jenny Reedy, Parks. Phil Reinke, Powell. Morgan Renee, Kroger, Burger King. Scott Ridenhour, Powell. Julio Rodriguez, Powell. Christine Scalzi, Parks. Steve Schmidlap, Powell. Mickey Schumacher, Parks. Bradley Seibert, Parks. Kyle Sullivan, Powell. Whitney Sullivan, Powell. Shay Selzer, Powell. Sharon Samani, Powell. Suzie Sharp, Powell. Eva Silvers, Kroger, Burger King area. Brady Smith, Parks. Crystal Smith, Kroger, Burger King area. Don Smith, Friends of the Parks. Doug Smith, Parks.
All right, and I'll pick up. Madison Stoller, Parks. Kyle Stein, Powell. Megan Stein, Powell. Edna Stiefel, Friends of the Park. Rusty Stump, Powell. Tiara Stump, Powell. Gloria Tap, Parks. Mike Teach, Powell. Jill Ventura, Four Seasons Garden Club. Jim Vedder, Friends of the Parks. John Voisinette, Powell. Dustin W., Parks. Tessa Walter, Powell. Rhonda Ward, Parks. Jeff Weeks, Powell. Lisa Weeks, Powell. Vicki Widener, Powell. Lisa Westner, Parks. David White, Powell. Dequarius White, Parks. Joe Wilson, Powell. Mark Wyon, Kiwanis Club and Key Club. Kendra Wink, Parks. Ann Ziegler, Parks. And then a few groups to recognize in themselves. The Builders Club, Four Seasons Garden Club, Key Club, Kiwanis Club, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, and Powell.
Right, and I think they all deserve a nice round of applause for their. The list will be put on our website as well. Moving on to the, I'm sorry, we're going to have a presentation right now. We're going to jump around here. We're going to move to resolution number R-84-23, which is tabled. It's a resolution of appreciation for the public service of Rhonda Meckstroth as city of Pickwa employee. So, we need a motion to untable.
I'll make a motion to untable that resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, at this time, we need a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Rhonda?
Yep, picture time.
Casey usually does.
Yeah, she normally does.
Resolution number R-84-23. Whereas Rhonda S. Meckstroth has retired as an administrative specialist in the fire department with the city of Pickwa, and whereas her retirement follows 33 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the commission of the city of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected thereto concurring that in recognition and appreciation of the public service of Rhonda S. Meckstroth with the city of Pickwa, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Cindy Pearson, Mayor.
Thank you, Rhonda.
And we have another recognition, and that would be with resolution number R-91-23. A resolution of appreciation for the public service of John Richard as a city of Pickwa employee. John, do you want to?
He's here.
He's here.
Good man.
Do we have a motion to?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number R-91-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution number R-91-23. Whereas John W. Richard has retired as a fighter, fire, firefighter with the city of Pickwa, and whereas his retirement follows over 24 years of faithful and dedicated service to the city and its citizens. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the commission of the city of Pickwa, Miami County, Ohio, all members elected thereto concurring that in recognition and appreciation of the public service of John W. Richard with the city of Pickwa, this commission tenders its unanimous and respectful tribute by this resolution, which shall be a matter of public and permanent record. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Cindy Pearson, Mayor. Congratulations. Thank you both for your dedication and your service. Okay, so let's move back to the consent agenda. Approval of the minutes.
I'll make a motion to adopt consent agenda.
Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Approval of the minutes. Move on to ordinance, the old business, and ordinance number O-6-23. This is the second reading.
Commissioner Mayor, I, Mr. Schmusing's not here tonight. He and I have discussed some of the issues involving this ordinance still. I also had a call from the Ohio Board of Realtors, and actually two calls from them, and discussed this matter with them. The first was just to discuss it with their administrator, who actually was very nice, very helpful. The second call had, I talked to two lawyers with them and also their administrator. They're actually working with us right now. They're reviewing our ordinance. They said, would we be open to any suggestions? I said, certainly. They had some suggestions, and we discussed them when I was on the phone. They had an older version, and I said, you guys need the newer version. I'm actually going to talk to them before our next commission meeting. I don't know if they'll have that much to change. They are looking at a template to use statewide for various cities, and they're looking at our ordinance along with others, and we'll progress. We also had a, the coenforcement team, I would say, had a meeting with a landlord, and he had some suggestions setting out on our checklist, what would be, if we would set out what was critical, meaning what needed to be changed immediately. What would, what would be, you know, something that has to be fixed, but we would give them a little bit more time. And then the third would be a green area where we'd say, hey, you got these problems, but we're going to go ahead and issue the permit. Mr. Schmusing indicated that he thought that was a decent idea, and he's going to, from my understanding, is likely to propose type of, that type of checklist, and I don't know if he'll have it next meeting or not, but I hope he does. That might give the folks out here a better understanding of what, what to look for. I mean, on critical issues, I think heating, cooling, electric, electrical issues would be critical. And, you know, a screen, a hole in the screen is not going to be a critical issue. I know that's been brought up a few times, but that's where we're at at this point in time.
Okay. So, those may or may not be added at the next?
They won't be part of the ordinance, but I think he's going to make them available so people can look at them. If it's not at the next meeting, I'm sure it will be out there at some point in time, but from what I understand, his goal was to create a list that would have, you know, one, is this a critical issue? If it's a critical issue, you know, the flooring is about ready to fall through, the furnace is not working, the electrical, the electrical has serious problems, so it would be critical issues. Then you're going to have another section that's going to just be caution, you need to fix these. We're not going to currently require you to do it within 24 hours, but it needs to be fixed in a short order. And then the last would be a green area, which would say, yeah, you've got a tear in your screen, you need to fix this, or, you know, you might have one board that's rotted out or something, hey, we just want to let you know our downspout is missing or something like that. He'll, he'll be in charge of making that list, but hopefully, I'm kind of hoping he'll have it for the next meeting, but I don't know if he will, so.
Okay, all right.
So, there were a lot of questions at the last meeting. What's that? There were a lot of questions at the last meeting. Are those, do we have answers for those?
Yes, I, if I'm, can I interject a bit?
Sure, I'm talking.
So, I just wanted to also comment on that checklist because I made it. So, it was a, it was a draft that was basically a template copied from another city, and the idea was, not, not actually the content of it, the content comes from the ICC, the 2021 version of the International Property Maintenance Code. That's where those checklist items come from. But really, it's the difficulty of getting all that information on a one-sheeter. That's it. So, the more detailed you want to get with a checklist, the longer it's going to get, and the worry is that somebody would see such a long list and get overwhelmed from that standpoint. Oh, this is, I can't believe you're throwing this book at me. That's what we would like to avoid. At the same time, I think it's important that kind of the rules of the game are set out very evenly for this side and that side. You know, when we come, these are the things that are, are critical violations that need to get taken care of right away, and then these are some things that are, you know, wear and tear that are things you, you have a lot longer, you know, relatively speaking to address. They're not, they're not life-threatening issues or, or safety issues for your tenants, for example. Mr. Lee, you talked about these questions. I've got a printout, and I think Commissioner Grissom, these came from you initially, and then we've got, you know, a set of responses to those things. Would you like them now?
Sure.
Okay, great.
I don't know.
So, what you have before you is a, just a summary of a lot of the same comments that we've heard over and over, just a summarization and kind of synthesization of those comments into the subject matters at hand, and then a response to each of those things. So, let's take, for example, the first comment is, you know, please put guidelines in place for the fees so people can budget, charge rent appropriately to cover future costs that a fee can without, basically, can we have some way to predict how fees are going to go over time? And then we have responses to those. We can publish these comments?
Yes.
This whole list, if you would like. So, this is ready now. I think there are about 15 of those, so just kind of looking at the, the whole program from different angles, people's different experiences as landlords, as tenants, and those in the realtors, that's where all these originally sourced from. But they're very good comments, and I think, as Frank pointed out, there's, there's been quite a bit of change to the original ordinance as we've gone through this process. So, I'm quite proud of that. I, I like to see a very responsive process. I'm glad that we have honed in from where we started initially to where we are now. And of course, there's room for change and new suggestions as we go along. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to add, I think a lot of these came from the last meeting, some of the notes, trying to compile them, submit what kind of questions, ideas, suggestions, kind of all-inclusive list on a lot of the feedback we received, and then, you know, just talking through it. So, I appreciate you putting this together with the responses.
Well, it's important that the citizens, they came up, they asked questions, and we told them we'd get back to them, so, so we can get that on the website, or we can answer them tonight. If people have them, that's fine.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Yeah, I think it's important that we establish the ground rules and have, I like the idea of a checklist, and I think that putting it out on the website for everybody to read and understand is also one of the important steps to doing this. Are there comments from our citizens? We'll start. Come on up.
So, do you have like a summary of, from these responses, what changes were actually implemented, or are we still reviewing these?
That's a good question. From, from the last reading to this reading, there have been no changes to the content of the ordinance, but there were previous to that. So, when, when we were still in the planning commission stage, a lot of changes happened there, and a lot happened previous to that first reading. From here, it's that compilation of questions and answers. So, I, I'm happy to summarize, it's a lot of text here, but, so, people have questions about how the fees will be set up and, and what the future of those fees would be like. The, so, as a response, the program proposes an annual registration and license fee of $65 per rental unit. The set fee per unit results in all property owners paying an equal amount per individual dwelling unit that they make available for rent. There's no additional fee for inspection activity other than the services provided or, or other services provided, and legislative action is required by the city commission to change that fee. So, in order to have an increase in fee, the way it's set up now, you come back to the city commission and the public for, for that discussion. Here's another comment. Don't double inspect. Work with the agencies that inspect for metro and potentially coordinate for our inspector to join them for at least the first inspection at a reduced charge so we can build rapport with the agency and create oversight for quality of work and reduce our future costs to maintain the program. Response. City of Pickwa Code of Ordinances adopts the International Code Council Property Maintenance Code. The Property Maintenance Code requires existing property improvements to be maintained to a standard that promotes public health, life, safety, and property values, and ensures the improvements continue to conform with the requirements of the building and zoning codes applicable at the time the improvements were originally permitted. The City of Pickwa Code compliance inspectors responsible for enforcing the Property Maintenance Code standards are trained and certified as ICC certified property maintenance and housing inspectors. Miami Metropolitan Housing Authority, which is the public housing authority, administers HUD Housing Choice voucher Section 8 program within Miami County. Property improvements occupied by tenants whose landlords receive rent payment from the Housing Choice voucher program are subject to HUD minimum property standards for housing. As the agency administering the program, Miami Metro, or Miami County Metro is responsible for inspecting the property to ensure that it conforms with HUD. Miami Metropolitan Housing Authority has contacted the city of Pickwa and expressed an initial interest in deferring to the city for inspection activity. This option will be further explored to determine if it is a viable alternative to meet the needs of all parties. So, we can. all parties. So we can coordinate. How that coordination may pan out is not determined yet, but the preference is to not be more intrusive than necessary to conduct the program. Utilize a Section 8 inspection list so there's consistency between agencies and provide clear guidelines that is truly impactful for safety and quality, or establish true citations versus, I'm sorry, I'm reading another comment, by the way, versus recommendations so that landlords don't get any surprises. Otherwise, the code enforcers are going to be accused of harassment. They take enough ridicule as it is, and we need to protect them. So the response, the HUD Housing Inspection Checklist is based on the HUD Minimum Property Standards for Housing, which is similar, but not quite the same as the ICC Property Maintenance Code. The City of Pickwa Checklist is very similar to the HUD Inspection Checklist. In general, both checklists focus on the condition of building finishes and building systems necessary. The HUD Housing Inspections result in pass/fail findings for each of the items inspected. After the inspection is complete, issues are reported to the property representative immediately. The owner has 24 hours to address any life-threatening problems, and they must report the repairs and provide proof to the inspector for no more than 72 hours after the inspection. Again, this is for HUD, that program. For non-life-threatening items, the owner is simply made aware of the finding. City of Pickwa Property Maintenance Inspections result in the identification of life-threatening and non-life-threatening conditions. After an inspection is complete, issues are reported to the property representative immediately. So they're, basically, this is, it's a similar process. There are some minor differences in the way that HUD's standards are applied and the goals that HUD has for its housing standards versus what the ICC does. They're similar, but, and should be coordinated. That's definitely an agreed, agreement with that comment. I can go on. There's a lot more.
Yeah. I think probably there's pages.
Yeah, there's pages.
And not having in front of you, I think that putting it on the website, we need to allow that to happen, and people respond to the, to the comments. So at this point, I think if, any of you have comments, concerns, come on up to the podium.
Randy Ritter, 521 Boone Street. Okay, just in reference to that, I'm not really sure what's going on with all that. I'm just, first time I've been up to a meeting in years. My response to that is, if you're doing checks and balances on all the landlords, per se, who's doing checks and balance on the city building? Got no restrooms. Should be fixed. Just making an outside.
It is being repaired.
Well, two weeks ago, how much time are you going to give the people?
Right.
Come up to the podium.
I just have, I just have a couple thoughts.
What's your name?
Ben Figate, 1413 Broadway Street.
Thank you.
The power to license is a power to take away. And when we first moved here in 2005, like most people, you buy a house and you find all kinds of stuff that needs repaired and all kinds of stuff. There's always going to be something, right? But I think it's very, we ought to be cautious about being quick to pass laws to remedy things that we see with our eyes as a problem, when we're not looking at the principle, which is individual rights, right? This is an infringement on individual rights. We moved here because, particularly because of the professionalism of our police department. I would hate to see that integrity and that, that character to be marred by unnecessary conflicts, which will arise from this resolution. So, you know, people are going to do what they want. I'm only one voice. But what I'm saying is, the power to license is a power to take away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chuck Starrett, 4244 West Dillon Road. We've talked this over for years. This is not new. This has been going on for 20 years. We've got all kinds of ordinances on the books that you've been tearing down houses, writing up people, citing people, fighting people, jailing people. On license, your job as a city commissioner, a city department assistant, protect and serve, not control. And on license, and I'm not trying to be critical, but I'm trying, I'm standing here looking at the flag behind you. And it makes me sick when I look at that, for justice, freedom, and liberty for all. And I watch the outsiders come in here as city managers, the department heads from other areas, making laws and rules that they don't live here, and they don't pay school taxes, probably, if they don't live in our town. They don't pay your street taxes. They draw our salaries and write up rules on us, when I think the local citizens are number one. They should be respected and given time. If you get grant money to tear a house down, some of that grant money could fix that house. We're already short of houses. How many houses have you tore down? How much tax dollars have been gone that you're losing on that? Investors are not coming here. I'm looking at properties that are being confiscated and being whittled around for a dollar, or $99, and $72, and whatever, that are $15,000, $20,000 property, even in bad repair. All this permit license thing is a control measure. It just means, if you don't listen to me, you're out of business. That's all it is. And it's a money grab to hire more people to increase the salaries and the benefits and the taxes on the citizens to support it. And just think about it. If you've got one inspector causing this trouble, what's three going to cause? And you cannot inspect every property, and every property's not going to, we don't even have a list of the proper, you don't even have a proper checklist written yet to even consider this ordinance yet. You don't have, you don't have the written ordinance in its detail since the changes have been made. And there are still clauses in that that are not being addressed of the power of the commission to oversee this. These are your citizens. We got, we got Pittsburgh Park, guy sacrificed his life for our country, for freedom, for that flag. We got the airman downtown, all the fighting he did in the air, sacrificed. Mrs. Pearson, you've got a family relative that suffered a loss in Vietnam. Way too young. They never got to have families. Their parents never got to have grandkids. They've sacrificed for the freedom of this country. Don't let these people take away your rights. It's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. And if we don't stop it now, where's it going to end? We don't need more inspections. I'm trying to reorganize point, okay? I'm an old man now. I can't control it anymore. I'm too old to do it. But we have all this interest back here that want to get involved again. I want to be willing to set it up. They'll be operating it, but I'll show them how we set it up. And it'll be a coordinated effort to solve these problems. It'll be working with the utility office to get your benefits, get your utilities paid. It'll be, it'll be contracts, leases that are usable. It'll be inspection reports to check out tenants before you rent to them, to keep the bad ones out, to keep the child molesters out of your properties, to keep the druggies out of your properties. We do a police background check, they slide the paper.
Your time's up.
Well, I don't know what your time's up. Is our freedom up?
Time's up.
Okay. All right. All I'm saying, let me finish.
I did.
Please, listen to the citizens. They're your company. We can form.
21,000 of them.
If it comes to it, you're just going to create more havoc. It is going to be initiatives. There's going to be an oversight committee to oversee you guys. That can be done. So I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
Roland Saramo, 660 South Street. The way I disagree with this, if you do it to us, you should do it to everybody in Pickway. We buy houses in Pickway. All these realtors buy houses in Pickway to fix them up. You buy them and tear them down. So what would you rather have? Empty lot, you get a grant to tear it down, then you tear it down, then you send the people a notice, you owe $13,000 to tear it down, and sign it over to us. That's how you're getting your houses in this town, these lots in this town. Every one of these houses, I'm thinking about buying another house. These people die, live in this house. I bet it's the worst house in Pickway. But you don't check these people's houses. You want to check the landlord's houses. There's people, a landlord got people coming in and out, in and out. You try to fix what's going on. When they move out, you try to fix it. You get people living in the house six years, don't touch it inside. They don't care. They live there. I'm going through one, every house I bought in Pickway was like that. If you got to fix them up. These realtors fix them up, try to help the city better, and all you guys want to do is tear them down. There's people out there that lives worse than some of us renters we got, and own their houses. Chris has been a lot of houses. He was a cop. I say he'll agree with me. You guys don't know nothing about it. You know, you sitting in front of the bench here, and I think, I know where you live, you should clean your backyard up. You got, you got poison ivy growing up a telephone pole in your backyard. Am I right or wrong?
Not my backyard, however.
Okay. Somebody gave me the wrong address. Sorry.
It's powerful.
But I think this is all wrong. If you're going to inspect houses, inspect everybody in Pickway, because this is discrimination of landlords. We try to fix houses up in Pickway. If we, how many, how many people, houses we buy, repo houses, the people ain't paying the payment, and they tear them up, and we fix them up. How many houses are like that in this town? As well as I hear, they got people calling them, these banks wanting to sell them houses. They don't want them. They don't want them. My mom went to nursing home, I got her house, and I took seven loads of shit. I'm, my mom passed away. Sorry to say this, mom. She had 10 loads of trace in her freaking house. People live like this. But you want to pick on us. You want to pick on us. You know, from what they say, karma's a bitch. Don't forget.
BJ Cooley, 1127 Anderson Street. Now, last time I was here, I got a little upset. My heart rate got a little high, and I'm not going to let this happen tonight. So I wrote out something when I got home. Average pay is anywhere from $19 to $20 an hour, okay? You've got rent that's over $1,000. You've got the City of Pickwa that's anywhere from $150 to $200. Your phone bill, your car payment, then you got gas to get back and forth to work. So you're going to tack on this fee to the landlords, and you being a landlord, you can't sit there and tell me you ain't going to charge your tenants that on top of their rent.
I wouldn't.
All right. Well, whether you do or you don't, I'm just saying, nine times out of 10 landlords will. No offense to any landlords in here, but that's just my thought. I'm from the south. I say how it is. You know, that flag behind you, there's a lot of people. My son's in the military, okay? If my son goes off to war and he gets injured, and you come in and say, oh, well, he can't stay here because you ain't got enough rooms? I'm sorry. I'm not sending my son, who's fought for our freedom, that we don't have anymore, to a damn nursing home. No offense. But my mom worked, and I saw several of them, okay? This right here, this is the root of all evil. You take this, money speaks value, okay? But you're going to sit here and tell me, I go to work, I'm still in my work uniform. I go to work, work 40 hours a week, okay? I've just got lucky, and I make a little over $20 an hour. So by the time I do that, they take out our government taxes for our government, people in the White House that don't do nothing, okay? Then I got to pay rent. So, like I said, you can't sit here and tell me that you ain't going to tack that on to rent. And like I said, this right here, this is root of all evil. I know nine times out of 10, a lot of you got money in your wallet. It says, in God we trust. I don't think a lot of you trust in God. That's my opinion.
Hi, my name is Megan Wise. I'm the executive officer with Midwestern Ohio Association of Realtors. It's our local Realtor Association. And I'm here just to present our board's position concerning the rental registration program before you this evening. Obviously, there's lots of, you know, heated discussion here. So I just first want to say that Realtors are always protective of private property rights. We feel the right to own and control your own property is of paramount importance. In fact, we feel private property rights are one of the foundations for our entire system of government, and that is strongly believed by our Realtors. Any limitations on private property rights need to be justified and narrowly tailored and to meet an overarching or compelling goal. Our fear is that this current proposal, as drafted, and we've not seen the changes, but as it was drafted when it was presented to us, do not meet the test to justify these encroachments on private property rights. However, we don't want to be one of the people that simply says no without also looking at alternatives, as they may meet that criteria, as I just mentioned. So to that end, we are working with our state association, as Frank mentioned, to craft an acceptable proposal. So that is actively being worked on by our state association and by our local association. Our goal is to provide that proposal in advance of the next reading of this, this proposal. We also know that this type of legislation is intricate and can lead to expensive and protracted litigation for communities if it's not drafted properly. So we urge this commission to take its time before finalizing this proposal, and if necessary, table the matter to ensure that the final product would pass legal challenge and also meet the needs of all of these people that are concerned. So thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Valerie Mulligan. I live on Pickwa Clayton Road. I am not a City of Pickwa resident in city limits, but I am the Director of Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support. And I will tell you that we have worked with six homeless veterans just in the past year, only being successful in getting two of them a place to live. That's alarming to me. Most recently, we participated in the Fourth of July events for the City of Pickwa, which we are very grateful for having that opportunity. What I noticed was probably about a dozen homeless people in the middle of High Street, between High Street and Market Street. That is very alarming to me. Very alarming to me. It's great that we want to improve our community. It's very important. This is my hometown, you guys. I want to see it improved, too. I appreciate your efforts. But I do have my concerns, especially in light of the Dayton Daily News article that came out today. I don't know if anybody has read it, but it says that Ohio's homeownership rate declined last year, falling to a level that tied the lowest on record for the state of Ohio. Hello. Homeownership? Come on, guys. That's, that's not where we want City of Pickwa, right? That's why we're going after landlords. We want people to buy homes and live in those homes they buy instead of renting. But Pickwa provides something different. Pickwa is a community that is safe, and overall, it's healthy. But you don't see it. Everybody sees the blight, and they see the bad, and they see the negative, and they see the, the torn screen, and the gutters falling off, and the poison ivy up pools, and whatever you want to see. But look deeper. How many people did you mention tonight that volunteered to clean up this town? Over 100 people, I believe, is what I counted. I think I stopped counting, about 100. That's huge. That speaks volumes for the health of our community. But in the Dayton Daily News article, it says the median home price in Ohio has grown to 2.6 times the median household income. Well, the median household income in Pickwa is much lower than the average in the state of Ohio, if I'm not correct. Correct me if I am wrong. High homeownership rates are important to communities and residents because they typically indicate healthier households, household ability to build wealth, residents tend to be more involved, and there are other community benefits, according to the director of the Home Ownership Center in Dayton. Look at this room. I don't know how many people in here are renters. You own rental property. But what I will tell you is, you have a community here that is alive and well and healthy, regardless of how many rental properties we have in this town. We have a healthy community. Please focus on that and give them their due time. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Evan Brumbaugh. I'm from Ludlow Falls, but I have some rental properties in town. My problem is the morality. I grew up poor. I got a job at 15 so I could help my mom make the mortgage payment. So I know what it's like to be a hard-working, poor person. And now, as a landlord, my job, as I see it, is to try to take is to try to take properties that need work, fix them up, make them nicer, and try to keep my, my prices as low as possible. A lot of landlords tell me my, my rents are too low. But I don't, I don't believe that because I want to help the next generation get to the next place. And it's my understanding that certain people have the attitude that they want to get rid of poor people in Pickla and that that is the real reason for some of this in some people's mind. I have a real problem with that. I think that's immoral and it's disgusting. I do agree, there are safety issues. I was an EMS coordinator at Upper Valley. I, I watched one of the videos. There was somebody mentioning what the, the poor children killed in Troy with the CO poisoning. I was in the ER that day. I was there. So, I know exactly what that's about. I put twenty-five years in as a paramedic firefighter. Safety is my priority. I put in ten-year seal battery, CO smoke detectors. I don't go with the gypsy cheap stuff. So, I try to take my properties and move them up. But I also try to keep my rents as low as possible because I know some of these people are struggling and I want them to have a chance to get ahead and maybe one day buy their own home. I think you need to find a better way to fix the problems without forcing rents to go sky high. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Kevin Lofton, uh, Community Manager of Pickle Village Apartments, thirteen forty-five Covington Avenue. Um, I deal with the HUD and when they give me a violation, I don't have time, I have to get it done right away. Um, I'm a history buff. One of the things I love is how our country is put together. Um, while reading this and hearing everyone, it seems like there's a great divide between where you're sitting and then we're at. Just, if I'm wrong, please correct me. We had this problem as well when our constitution was being put together with a great compromise, where people were wondering, like, how should their votes be counted in our legislature? We really need to get back to that great compromise again. It seems there is a lot of gray area in this, uh, in this ordinance that we're trying to do. There's a lot where, a lot is left up on our, us as a landlord, but not very much protection from us. What happens when one of my residents come in, destroy something, and it's, happens to be that time where we have our inspection? It takes me two months to get a window. I'm in the middle of a renovation right now with my property and we're already always having trouble trying to get material just to do things. Um, but it seems, you know, if someone breaks a window, if I have to have it done in twenty-four hours, I can't do that because if anyone does, knows construction, there isn't a normal-sized window. So, it seems like we really need to get together. Yes, we did have a planning stage. But during this whole thing, we found more holes. If we could maybe table this, get some of the ones that have been very spoken here today to get together, and I will gladly be one of them if you allow me. And let's sit down, let's go through this again and try to protect both the tenants and us as landlords. Yes, safety and well-being of everyone is, and especially children is very important, but we have to do it the right way. We have to do what's best for you guys, for the landlords, for the residents, for everyone. It just, from what it seems, a lot of the landlords feel like they're being, you know, left up, hanging dry. Seems like there's no protection for us. Let's get together again, let's table this, and let's try to work on a better plan. We've already had, what, the last three have said the same thing. Let's work on something better. We can do better with this. If we're, this is the way you guys want to go. Let's get back together, let's go back to the drawing board, and let's fill in these gray areas. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kathleen Miller, fifteen fourteen Madison Avenue. Um, born and raised in Pickla here again. Met with several of you before about some of my concerns regarding the treatment of a property that was torn down here in Pickla despite a family's ongoing effort to improve and move back into that home that was taken by a fire. Um, to piggyback on some of the things that were said, we have great citizens. I'm so very proud of everybody who stood up today and voiced what they have to say. But the citizens are starting to see city leaders completely disconnected from us. Um, we lose a pool, there's no attention to Hans Pavilion in the park. It doesn't seem to be any investments in what families want to do. There's heaps of investments downtown if you want to go drink and have a beer and walk around with your beer in the Dora. But there's not much for our families here. What is drawing our people? We see what, and I'm not saying it is, but it certainly gives every appearance to be a very draconian money grab to go after this, here, this inspection for this fee, this fee, this fee. But there's nothing coming back to your citizenship. We are not feeling any investment in us. We are not feeling that we are being heard, being represented, given a community to be proud of or to move into. I work with, like, a contractor that works for Miami County. I get to hear lots of comments from people all over this county, Potsdam, Tipton, City, everywhere. And the one county, or the one community they say they wouldn't ever want to join is this one. The one that I love to be a part of, that I'm proud of because of the people, because of my neighbors. But all they see is the excessive absorbent fees for the utilities, what's going on with the rental inspections. It's just time after time again that the people seem to be ignored and nobody wants to come and join this community because of that. So, I'm just asking you all, as you're considering all of these comments, legal things, everything, look at your people. We want to grow this community. We want to be homeowners, we want to invest, but it doesn't seem like there's a lot reflected back to us about our importance and our voice being heard and our community being given to us as something we can invest in. City of Troy gave their people the Hobart Building. I talked with a couple commissioners that said that, that Hobart Building has always just been a money pit. But they upkeep it and they give it to their people because it is a gift to them and it's something they can use and enjoy. Our city pool, whatever it is, if it's not a moneymaker, it's down, we just, we lose it. And we don't get anything back. So, please, hear your constituents, hear your citizens, and find a better way so our community can finally be something that people seek out again and want to be a part of. Thank you all very much.
Hi, my name is Tanya Blair and I own Leading Stars Realty and I own rentals here in town too. Um, I just made a trip to Niagara Falls. Has anybody been to Niagara Falls lately? The town there. You think this town looks bad, you need to look at that town. I wish I would have took pictures. Boarded up houses, afterhouses, and they're all beautiful houses that could be saved. And I think that's what your citizens are trying to tell you. We have old, beautiful houses. And you have people that want to make them back beautiful again. So, I just wanted to say that because our community is not as bad as what I've seen. I mean, obviously Niagara Falls is beautiful, but that town, oh my god. It was horrible.
Thank you.
I have one more comment, sorry. Um, BJ Cooley, eleven twenty-seven Anderson, okay? Like, somebody's already brought up. You guys want to have all these bars downtown with alcohol and that's all great and handy. But what about family things? You've got two, she's my language, pot places here in Pickla. Well, I don't know what the one's going to be out there off of thirty-six, but you got the one right off of twenty-five A that you can see from the interstate. Why don't you bring something for the community with families and kids? You had a landlord get up here and say that his rent's cheaper. When I was looking, when I was getting ready to move, I couldn't find nothing less than a thousand dollars less. I want to go to Indiana and I'm sorry, I'm not driving to Indiana to Anna to work every day or all the way down to Dayton. I respect my police, I respect my law enforcement. Do you have a night where you get the community together with the police department? Troy does it. Sidney does it. What's wrong with Pickla?
We do it.
We do it, it's coming up.
And National Night Out.
I, I haven't seen it.
It's every year on the, uh, first Tuesday in August, every year. I can't tell you, I mean, it was there.
Evan Brumbaugh, Ludlow Falls again. Just one thing I wanted to point out. If you're going to write a law, write it narrow. I hear some of the statements of a light touch. If it's not in the law, then anybody can have a light or a heavy touch. There's nothing you can do to stop it. Word the law in a way that mandates that light touch, that makes that clear. Because the way the law is written now, as I have read it, it gives way too much, I'm sorry, ordinance. It gives way too much leeway for somebody to take a lot stronger stance than you're telling us that you'll take. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Kevin Jenkins, six nineteen North Downing Street. Uh, this town blackballed. There's no factories in this town. Nobody wants to come here, you can believe it or not. We've been, we've been trying to get a hold of this for years, but it's all up here and right over there. And I'll say that to you, Frank. Uh, you're going to pad your own pocket. You know? Uh, factories. What you want, shopping malls? I see you got a pizza, pick, a pizza place coming in here. Right across the street from a pizza place. Is that stupid?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you got a car wash, a locally-owned car wash out there on thirty-six. You let a big commercial car wash be built right beside it? You don't value us. You don't value us, you don't hear us, and I know you don't hear us. Because your, your head's blocked, your eyes are, you're, you're covered, you're going to do it your way.
Sir.
Because you're a lawyer.
Please sit down.
Hey, no personal attacks, please, focus on.
Okay, I'm just saying.
Thanks.
Where's the factories at? We have plenty of land. They go right on by us. Troy's booming, Sidney's booming. People being, people's building in Troy big time, Sidney big time. Look at this town. How you expect it to grow? You're not. Ain't nobody going to want to come here. Nobody's going to want to come here because of the way it's ran. Because you want to beautify Pickway but not look around. You want to beautify the town right down there, but not, not, deal with the problems like the streets are bad. You know, you don't want to, you don't want to take care of that. You want to, you want to just make yourselves look good. That's the problem. You ain't listening to the citizens, you ain't listening to the people, the people that pay taxes. On my house, my property tax is one hundred and forty dollars. I was paying five twenty-five this year, I go down there, six forty-five. What the heck is that? Yeah, property values goes up, does it matter? Nobody's going to want to buy it. I live in a thirty-four hundred square foot home. It's just me and my dog. Am I going to be able to sell and get my money out of it? No. That's because property values all around. It's because what is here in Pickway? What is here in Pickway? What is here in Pickway? This town hasn't grown in a long time. And you guys just sit around and think it's, it's all happy land. Thank you.
Taxpayers' money builds these schools. We kick, we tear them down. We give them to the city. The city sells it to a millionaire for a dollar to build and make him money. I'll buy every piece of property you got in Pickway for a dollar. I guarantee if I ain't got the money, let does. But, you know, this taxpayers' money. Taxpayers build that school, give it to you and you give it to a rich man, a millionaire for a dollar. My buddy won the piece of land on South Street from the school. Cost him a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. South Street School is, whatever it is, cost him a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. Because he won it so you clowns wouldn't build something there. And he got the money to pay for it, didn't bother him a bit. And he keeps that place better than the city would keep if they had it. He has it sprayed and everything. Bill Dieter's on Pauline's Junkyard. He takes real good care of that place. He bought that place so you people couldn't build beside it. Now, that is sad when people does that, that's got money. That's good you got the money. But you sold the school for a dollar, am I right or wrong?
I don't know what you're talking about.
Huh?
What are you talking about?
Bennett's school.
That school was exchanged with the city.
Yeah, I heard you sold it for a dollar and he donated two hundred thousand dollars for it.
You don't know what you're talking about. What happened with that was the hospital site was owned by the city. And I was on school board when this happened, so I know what happened. So, the hospital site was on the city property, that was city-owned property. The school wanted to put the, the new school there, the PCIS building. So, they reached an agreement with the city that the city would give them that property and Bennett would go to the city. And that's where, and the city bought that for a dollar. And as far as I know, and I don't know where this rumor is coming from, as far as I know as of today, that is still city-owned property on the riverfront. Bennett School property.
Now, I heard it sold to guys.
Well, I don't know where you heard it from, it's wrong.
Articles in the paper.
It's in the paper, Pickla paper. It's in the paper.
Thank you for your comments.
No, the people, he's still talking about it.
No.
I have not seen a contract for it, I'll tell you that. I've not seen a contract for it.
What, are you changing your story now since somebody's seen the paper? You got a contract for a dollar.
I don't, I don't have.
For a dollar.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a seat.
Open your pants.
Diana Park, four three eight zero Brunson Lane. Frank, that property was gifted to you guys. You gave it to Pickla Improvement Corporation for a dollar. It's in, it's, there's articles in the paper.
Improvement Corporation is part of the City of Pickla.
Okay, and then Pickla.
The Pickla Improvement Corporation was set up in the late seventies, early eighties. And the idea of the Pickla Improvement Corporation is, is you set property in there so they incorporate, the corporation can sell it to developers in the future.
There you go, so.
So, if you're saying that it was sold to the PIC, that would not shock me in any way. But that's a part, that's an organization that has more city members on it than anything.
Yeah.
And then it's, they, they.
The left hand knows the right hand quite well.
No, I don't understand.
It's all the same, same people.
The, the idea behind an improvement corporation is that it goes out and it tries to find a developer for the property.
And you found one.
I am not aware of that.
That was in the paper.
I, I, I am not aware.
Where are you at, Frank? It's in the paper and the, and it's GF Bailey.
GF Bailey was interested in, I don't know if it sold yet or not.
It's all wrote up, you're right, I don't know.
I have not seen. I will tell you this, I have not seen the contract.
No, I bet you haven't.
So, if I see the contract, then I will look at it.
But you know what's going on.
I don't know everything, no.
Yeah, and GF Bailey is, is doing this in Dayton.
GF Bailey is a, a person of interest. I have not seen.
If you don't know, then why does GF Bailey have Pickla listed under their advertisement?
Please, I don't know, I have not seen a contract for this, is what I'm saying. If a contract comes up on my desk, I will look at it. Kirsten's over there, perhaps she knows.
Okay, GF Bailey's website is either doing fraud because they list Pickla. They list Pickla, they list Trotwood, they list Dayton. So, it's funny that it's in the paper, but yet they're advertising Pickla.
Okay. I, I know that this is not the topic at hand, but the, that school site is not sold and, and there are many times where development starts, gets, not start, not the actual development, but the interest comes and something happens, whether it's interest rates.
It was in the paper.
I know, but that, that, as far as I know, and I'm in the development department and I do all these permits and it would come across my desk too. But I, I don't think that that's going forward with Mr. Bailey. I think he, uh, or Mr. Forbes from the GF Bailey Corporation. I think he got, he had a personal issue and things kind of fell down and they were planning on remarketing it and that's the latest I've heard.
Oh, social justice agenda.
For me?
That's what he is.
For that, oh, for him, yeah.
Yeah, but yeah.
Yeah.
It's all wrote up that Pickla was doing this, passing it on to this investor. And all of a sudden, you guys are saying, we don't know anything about it. Who's GF Bailey?
No, I don't think it's that we don't know, I don't, I just don't think that you got the right person in the room. You would want Kreshmazing in the room to answer the latest and greatest on that property, but that's.
Ma'am, the city manager's right here and he's just told me they don't have any contract on that property.
I didn't say there was a contract. It was in the paper that Pickla was, the Pickla Corporation found investor that was interested and they were giving it to them for a dollar.
It is, it is not, look. There's a lot of things put on the internet that are, are not true.
We didn't just create that out of thin air.
Thank you for your comments, would you please have a seat?
Sometimes I read the contracts. I would think, I would know. Sometimes I read the contracts.
1514 Madison Avenue, just so we can get to the bottom of it, you might wanna contact him because on the GF Bailey website of their locations of Dayton, Trotwood, there's also Pickwa. So somebody needs to get a hold of them and tell them that they're false advertising or fraud or something. Cause it's right here.
Commissioner, I can tell you this. I've not reviewed one contract with GF Bailey.
We haven't seen a contract either. They were interested, but we don't know.
Jeff Grimes, 1314 Maplewood Drive. So, I'm not gonna, so many questions, so little time. So here is from Miami County, landlord tenant rights and responsibilities under Ohio law. And maybe you guys should read this, okay? Have any of you?
I have.
Okay, so tenants' rights and remedies. Rent escrow. If your landlord does not comply with his or her obligations, you have a right to escrow your rent with the court. You as tenant do not have the right to stop paying rent. I'm, I need more than three minutes, but I suggest that maybe you guys should read this. And so, I insist that you table this meeting and, cause you don't have any more information. Nothing's updated. So this should be tabled. And we should go back to, let me see, let me see, I'm sorry. I have a lot of notes. So Metro doesn't charge for inspections, but the city is gonna charge for inspections, correct? So what if you rent to Metro? Is the city still gonna charge somebody? Do you want Metro, more Metro housing? Let's go to selective enforcement on your codes. You haven't even got to the rentals and stuff yet, but since I've been speaking out, I now have two packets that I'm being charged with misdemeanors on two of my properties. Is that selective enforcement? So when you guys go home tonight, drive up Water Street, I own the property right behind US Bank. One thing is sidewalks. So the end of Water Street, where it deadens to steel, who owns the property on the right-hand side? Let's see, maybe Dan French? There's no sidewalks. Okay, so once again, selective enforcement. I don't have enough time. I don't have enough time to voice my concerns on, you say, you say you serve the city of Pickwa. Let me read this. City of Pickwa website. Serving our community. The Pickwa City Government is a dynamic organization, some one hundred and eighty-eight full-time employees strong. We take great pride in the services that the organization is able to offer the citizens of Pickwa. Our citizens are our customers and they are very important to us. Citizens should always be treated fairly, respectfully, and courteously. Pickwa citizens have come to expect excellent programs and services from their local government that requires a team effort to continue this tradition of outstanding service. So I'm a small businessman, so now I've got misdemeanors and code, go to jail for six months because my sidewalk is, my sidewalk isn't fixed? Is that serving our community? Take a look at these, please.
Kevin Jenkins, 619 North Downey Street. I contacted the city utilities the other day. I'm normally, again, new tenant go in, right? I have a contract. They get a copy, I get a copy. They bring that contract down to the city to apply for utilities, right? Get it all put in their name. The city normally called me and verified it. That's fine. That's what it's supposed to be. The guy running the city office, utility office, I called him the other day. Now granted, I got a squatter in my, one of my houses. It's a squatter who has no contract with me, who has never paid me a penny of rent, and he's squatting in my house. Okay? Crap all over the place. I did, I did go in and change the locks. You know why? Cause it's my property. He don't pay nothing. The city man told me, you know what he told me? I called him. I said, don't let him get utilities turned on. He said, well, you have no choice. If he, if he brings in the money and, and pays the deposit, the utility's gonna be turned into his name. What the hell is my contract for? Okay, so he gonna give a squatter utilities and a property that he's never paid me for. Is there something wrong with your system here? You know, is that fair? I've been, I've been laying alone for forty years. Okay, I could retire on the rent I've lost and live comfortable. That's no kidding. I put money in about properties as soon as they go empty. I had one, I totally remodeled. Get in there, six months later, it's tore up. There goes my profits. Yeah, is, is it lucrative? Yeah, it's time to sell. Because I got them all paid off in about four months. All paid off. I'll let somebody else have my headaches. It ain't worth it no more. You don't, you don't respect us. You, you, you don't care about the citizens. You don't care about us. You don't hear us. Your ears are closed.
The ordinance?
One more.
Go ahead.
Come on up.
Tanti Struminger, US Route 36. From the way I understood at the beginning of the meeting, Frank, you said that you were working on and maybe changing this ordinance?
No.
While working with the other folks?
I said they asked if we would be open to changes. And I said certainly if you had some changes that we would, we would consider them. I didn't say we would. They're going to contact me on the 28th. We actually have a meeting. I'll discuss it with them. They had some suggestions last time and we talked about, and I said they're, we just can't do it to pass muster. And they, they didn't have our current version and they wanted to look at it. So I don't know what they'll come up with. They may say nothing. They may some, come back with something. If they do, I'll let you know.
Okay. Well, my concern is if we're going to be making changes and stuff again, and then we've got Chris working on making things more defined, that we should table this until these things are done and give us the opportunity to hear exactly what is going on. You know, I think we should all be on the same page. I truthfully make sure my people are taken care of in my homes. And I'm sure a lot of these folks back here, and we don't like being called slum lords, so I wish you'd have quit it. So I would appreciate it if we kind of table this until we get this all set and defined, if we're gonna start moving and changing things around. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Jeff Grimes, 1314 Maplewood. I promise this will be my last time. But, so GF Bailey, I have some things on here that you might wanna, Frank, you might wanna look at my Facebook page if you don't know anything about it. I'm sorry. The PIC, a nonprofit community improvement corporation, in turn plans to sell the land for a dollar to GF Bailey Company. The GF Bailey in turn will be obligated to redevelop, develop the site with eight new single-family dwelling units with character and qualities agreed upon, said Krishmizing, Pickwa's Development Director. The result will be that property, which was previously donated to the cities for the purpose of facilitating redevelopment, will be developed and a substantial new investment will be made in the neighborhood. The land was donated to the city by the city schools following the demolition. So then, more things. GF Bailey, he is owned, or it is owned by, sorry, I got a lot of stuff on here, Timothy J. Forbes. Timothy J. Forbes has a case number with Common Police Court of Montgomery County for a certificate of judgment for failure to pay his income tax. Hmm, something happened to him. I wonder what. I can't find one single house that GF Bailey has built. Have you guys, you guys are all the ones that said you're gonna, it was a commission to sell it to him for a dollar. Did you do any checking? None?
Hasn't come across our desk.
None. And so what gives you the right to sell something that belongs to the citizens of Pickwa for a dollar? I'll give you two dollars for it. How's that sound?
It hasn't come across our desk.
You want me to give it to you now? I don't have any tax liens. I do have some criminal charges filed against me. But Frank also said that the last thing that you guys would wanna do is to make it go this far. And I'm offended that I have some building materials and an old truck that has historical plates on it. And I'm gonna go to jail for six months. Now, do you guys agree with that? I don't, I don't know what else to say. Definitely priorities are not straight. And you have to listen to us. We're not gonna give up. It's gonna cost the city more money. We're gonna get an attorney and we're gonna fight you guys. Thank you very much.
And Commissioner, to be clear, there is no contract on the property. And the way that the process works, Pickwa Improvement Corporation, that some of the commission do sit on, is the intermediary in the, in the conversation about economic development. So we, we have no contract. There has been no exchange of properties. The process currently as it is, as PIC did agree to the redevelopment of that site, the, the acquisition of the property was always with the idea that it would be redeveloped because we have a shortage of, of mid-market housing. But there are, there is no contract. And so if there's been something stated in social media or the papers, incorrect.
Can't believe it. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to move on-
Go to the auditors' office. Go to the auditors' office if you don't believe that. And see if the, the property's been transferred.
I thank you for all your comments this evening. We will be meeting again with the third reading of this ordinance. And it will be August the second, which is a Wednesday. August first is National Night Out.
Yes.
And we have moved the meeting to, one day, to August second at the Plaza. The Plaza, upstairs, at the Plaza. We're going to gather the information and the changes-
Table it at that meeting. You don't know. We don't know what we're gonna do at this point.
We will gather the information and the changes that we are proposing. And we can talk about it at the next meeting. If we need you, we will simply table it.
How can, how can this be the second reading when the ordinance has not been read?
Where is it? It's been read.
It's been read. It was read.
It was.
And presented.
Right. It was never read in the form that it's supposed to be in. We have not seen it. How is this fair for you not to table it? We don't know what's going on.
There is no ordinance.
There is an ordinance.
If you, if you'd like to, so everything we've talked about tonight, from the checklist to, and we're gonna post the comments. Right, and the ordinance.
Hey, hey, what's up?
And I-
Rules of order.
I just, yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody knows, so you can talk about the exact same thing. The, the changes to the ordinance have always been posted. If you just Google "City of Pickwa rental registration," that page will pop right up. "City of Pickwa rental registration." And that's gonna pop right up. It's got a lot of, it's got a lot of content from the schedule of this so far to the ordinance itself as it's changed. It's always been updated, that we've never, you know, and it's in, it's in this packet as well, in its latest form. It's always been published online. That checklist is there, that checklist that we talked about needing to revise to meet people's needs. That's up there now in its current version. That may change, but that's not part of the ordinance. But a lot of information up there.
You did do one line.
You only have to read the reading of the heading of the ordinance. You read the reading, you read the ordinance. And she, the clerk went ahead and did that at the beginning. You don't read the entire ordinance. It's never been done.
Well, it's a part of our agenda packet for all these meetings as well, correct?
Right, right. It's, the ordinance is on the website.
It's right here.
All right, we're going to move on with resolution number R-92-23.
A resolution authorizing an amendment to the zoning map to change the zoning designation of parcel J-27-045800, approximately 119 acres located near the corner of Looney Road and Snodgrass Road from AG Agricultural to IL Light Industrial.
Good evening again, commissioners. This tract of land, you've seen this whole case or project come before you in a different form as an annexation. I failed to notice some of the neighbors within the Indian Ridge subdivision the first time around. So, and that would have been for the planning commission meeting. So if I can say that again, I messed up and I did not notice some of the people in the Indian Ridge subdivision. Actually quite a few people. We have a nice- Sorry, should I wait a second?
They've had us now.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I figured. So, yeah, and that's actually how it came to my attention as well. And then to rectify that situation because I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't want it to seem like we were trying to slip anything past anybody or also leave the, the zoning change imperfect in, in legal terms. We just need to make sure that this gets done right. And then, so the neighbors, everyone within 200 feet of that parcel was noticed by mail. For the last planning commission meeting, we heard the item again. Between the first meeting and the second meeting, the first meeting, we had four planning commission members present and the, they, they voted to recommend this zoning change by 4-0. Second time, there were five members present and it was a 4-1 vote to recommend the change. So what you have before you is the now annexed land, 119 acres that came from the county into the city. It's located at the corner of Looney Road and Snodgrass Road. So a little bit on the, so on the southeast side of that, just north of the Indian Ridge subdivision. And the plan is not, not super well-defined at this point, except that the, the desire is to market that land as light industrial land to basically mirror what you see across Looney Road from that tract of land. So what you see are the county version of light industrial properties that are there. And what we do in the city is, we have, compared, compared to the county, we have more extensive pavement standards, landscaping standards, and transition standards. Transition standards are part of the new code Pickwa, development code that you passed earlier. And what that does is create a large buffer between residence, residential zoning and industrial zoning. So what could be expected is a 50-foot buffer between, and that's for everything. There's no pavement or anything for 50 feet between the nearby residential zoning district in Indian Ridge and the property to the north. There's also a, a drainage ditch that runs on the bottom third of that property. I suspect that that drainage ditch is going to affect the layout of the property significantly. We think that that would push development probably toward the northwest corner or north, or I'm sorry, the, kind of the western edge along Looney Road. That's where we would expect land to perhaps be sliced out. What you can expect though, as, as these, as that track gets broken down and- What you can expect, though, as, as these, as that tract gets broken down and more plans get made, more layouts get, are understood after marketing, is this, this item to come back again for further public review through the subdivision process. So that is something that will happen in the future if land is carved out through the subdivision process. Staff recommended approval of the request, the planning commission voted to recommend approval of the request, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Comments or questions from commissioners?
So you made contact with all those people at this point?
Yes, that was rectified.
Okay. Any comments or questions from our citizens?
Evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Thank you, by the way. I'm Rob Alexander, I reside at 8468 Union Shelby, the owner of Indian Ridge Builders. I am here to represent Teeters Real Estate Investments LLC, who is, the one who has petitioned for this annexation and zoning. First of all, thank you for moving your meeting on August 1st, so that we can let you guys get to be a part of the National Night Out, that is a big celebration out in Indian Ridge. Apparently no one knows about it, from what I've heard this evening, but we have 300-plus people. Care Flight lands there, Med Flight lands there, we have Touch a Truck, it's really quite a big event, all to honor our first responders, so hope you'll stop out. We have had 48 new families move into Indian Ridge since we started out there in 2015, so we have seen growth in our community, we continue to see growth. We own the two farms to the north of Indian Ridge, they've been annexed into the city many, many years ago. There's one of 80 acres, a second one of 65 acres. This one of 120 acres somehow got missed and never got brought into the city, so we decided it was time to bring it in, so that all of our properties would be developed under the ordinances and codes of the, of the City of Pickwa, for consistency and for what we believe quality for our community. Obviously, we're not going to bring anything in that will negatively impact the, our neighborhood there. Quite simply, we own 300 acres out there, as well as another 30 properties that are already ready and prepared for new homes, so we're not going to do anything with this property that would negatively impact our community, no investor ever does that, that I know of. So our goal is just basically to be able to create an opportunity. I will tell you, it is not easy to get families to move into Pickwa right now, we have, of those 48 families, 33 of them were not previously residents of the City of Pickwa. So, that's a good thing, with 70% of the, the people who've built out there, and again, these are not production homes, these are custom homes, some upwards of $800,000. So, we're proud of our Indian Ridge community, obviously what we're doing here is something that we believe is something we can make positive, and, as a part of that. And I'm here to answer any questions you might have, because I was not able to be here last time.
Any questions?
Appreciate that response right there, and helping enlighten us.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. All right. So at this time, we need a motion?
Okay. Hi, everybody, excuse me, my name's Christy Fisher, I live at 801 West Snodgrass Road, directly up to the north of this parcel that we're talking about. My parents purchased this property, 40 acres, in the late 70s because they wanted to live, not in Dayton, but in Pickwa, on a farm. They raised their kids there. Pardon me.
You're all right, take your time.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I don't want to hear that bell.
Oh, you're fine.
They raised their kids there, my youngest sister attended Pickwa High School, my nephew goes to Pickwa High School. I moved back to the farm in the late 90s to start a business there, I raised organic produce there for 20 years. My husband and I were married there, I currently reside there. I am invested in the Pickwa community, I'm invested in Miami County. I, let's see, I'm going to lose my place here, we're, we're part of the agricultural community there, I currently raise hay on my property, that feeds cows, right around the corner from my property. I, I live there because I want to live on a farm, I want to live in a farming community, and I just want to state that I am not in favor of rezoning the whole 119 acres as light industrial. I would like to voice some of my concerns. I'm concerned that not everything that's listed in the staff report is what is on the full list that's permitted principal uses. To me, there are many more unfavorable uses than are what is listed on the staff report. I'm concerned about businesses with frontage on Snodgrass Road without a buffer, because we talk a lot about residential up against light industrial, but we don't talk about light industrial up against ag land. So there's not a buffer required up against ag land, which is right across the street. Now, I am in Miami County, and Snodgrass Road is still Miami County, as far as I know, the, you know, the annexation, as well as the light industrial, would just go to that hedge right there. I am very concerned about a traffic increase on my road, on Snodgrass Road. I'm increased, I'm concerned about this road being restructured to contain semis and/or heavy traffic, like Looney Road is, Snodgrass Road is not like that currently. I am concerned that only the subdivision is stated in the staff report as protected from intrusion of unwanted traffic, not the residents on Looney Road or on Snodgrass. I'm concerned, can I give, can I have just a couple more minutes? I mean, I don't think there's anybody else that's going to speak. So, I'll hurry. I'm concerned, I, I was going to read from here, but that's basically what it says in here, that only future connections from the tract of land will come from Looney or Snodgrass Road only. The property owner, of course, is concerned about their residence in the subdivision, but nothing's said about the residents on Looney Road or Snodgrass Road. I'm concerned about pollution from runoff, dust, lights, and noise, and flooding onto my property, onto my property. I'm concerned about increased crime. I'm concerned about the loss of my lifestyle, and the reason my family chose to purchase this property, and the farming lifestyle that we live and that I choose to live on a farm. Now, I, I, I understand that, I, I can't expect that property to stay in ag all its, all its life, I understand that. But I am concerned, and I want to know why, the property owner needs the full 119 acres to be zoned light industrial. When Krish Smeazing was here at the planning commission meeting, he kept talking about the I-75 and Looney Corridor, Corridor, and about how that is going to bring a lot of businesses into our area, and thus jobs, and more housing, which I understand, but to me, a corridor is a narrow strip. And you guys even just said a moment ago that it's going to reflect that what's on the other side of Looney Road, on the west side of Looney Road. Now, that's a thin strip, that's not that deep as this 118, 119 acres is. So, I'm just concerned, and maybe, maybe it could be rezoned to different classifications, light industrial on the edge, on Looney, possibly replatted like the other lands are, his other properties are, for future plating into residential. So, you know, I, I'm not in favor of this rezoning, the full property zoned as light industrial, and I am really just afraid of what it's going to do to that area and my lifestyle, and, you know, some of the things that are on the light industrial are really scary things. You know, it could be a greenhouse with tons of lights, it could be a fuel storage unit with huge smelly things of fuel, and I know the property owner is saying that he wouldn't do anything detrimental, but we're also saying, not saying what he would do. So I appreciate your time, listening to me past the buzzer, I really appreciate that, I appreciate your consideration, thank you very much. If you have any questions for me, please, I'd be happy to answer anything.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
My name's Gary Conick, Flag Peregrine Place. I share Ms. Fisher's comments. At the planning commission meeting, there were a number of people that lived in Indian Ridge on Seminole, and specifically in Kiowa, that were very concerned about this development, and what they were going to do north of there. So I just, on their behalf, I think that the, the staff report, as she stated, is without merit, in that it doesn't really talk about moderate impact industrial development in light industrial zoning. And moderate industrial, moderate impact, it includes automobile manufacturing, there could be a huge manufacturing building out there, or pellet. Now, that might be attractive to the planning commission, or to the city commission, but if you're a resident, that you're invested in your property, the massing, that, that doesn't really fly with code Pickwa. But code Pickwa talks about moderate impact, it talks about laundry, dry cleaning plants, huge plants could go in light industrial. So, it's, it's not in just a small item, these are permitted uses. Now, my main objection to this proposal is that we have a comprehensive plan, and the comprehensive plan intuitively, there's a lot of places in Pickwa where the community is extending out into the county, and the count, the city has the authority to extend their zoning that they have along the periphery into the county. So right here in Indian Ridge, what I have is copies of the comprehensive plan for each of your wards, and what I'd like to show you...
This is first ward.
You're, you're here. Thank you.
This is second ward.
Right here, thank you.
This is, uh...
I'm fourth.
Third ward, now that's in, they're in, where they're talking about is in your, your ward.
I know.
And this is fourth ward.
Thank you.
Now, what, what you see is the, this, the development department, there's this huge black area, basically, that I've circled, which is the east of town and the south of town. And if we look at the, the little sevens in the comprehensive plan, these are designated as economic expansion areas. Now, if we look at the area under consideration, which I put the R, it's in the upper corner, that has a big six there, and that is a neighborhood expansion area. It's not an economic expansion area. So, these people, the, the people on Seminole and Kiowa, they invested, and whenever you purchase a, a property, you want to know, well, what's, what's going to happen next? What's going on out there? And so you look at the, the planning documents for the city, and we have been presenting for years that this was going to be a neighborhood expansion area. And you go out to Indian Ridge Builders, they've done a great job, they, we have a shortage of housing, they're, they're, they've got different kinds of neighbor, they've got duplexes, single-family, larger home, that's exactly what the comprehensive plan called for, not a light industrial. Now, to, to your point, they don't need this whole 120 acres, they can continue the expansion of the neighborhood expansion area. In the planning commission meeting, Mr. Alexander mentioned that, well, it's going to take 60 years to finish it, but he also stated that other builders had asked him to move in and stay, you know, move the, accelerating the building process for residential, and they, they owned the property, they didn't allow it. There, there was something about quality. Well, we're not, we don't need $600,000 homes, we need a lot of mid-level homes in the city, and in the periphery. So my concern is, my personal concern, is that the neighborhood I live in butts up against a neighborhood expansion area, out to the west, and we're relying on the city to provide us with some kind of protection, that the development department isn't going to go after more development and economic development, when they have more than enough. If you look at that black, that black area, it's, that's probably thousands of acres, that, you know, it's not an issue of, I'm saying, don't develop, I'm saying, let's do it smart. What is the legacy here? Is the legacy, we're going to put huge manufacturing plants in the Seminole or Kiowa's backyard? I hope not. I hope we're looking at residential. So I say, reject it, send it back, and maybe along the lines that you're talking about, go forward, something like that.
Gary, how'd you vote on it in the planning commission?
What?
How did you vote on it?
We voted four to one.
You were the one.
I was the one. I don't think they understood, I, they, they put great credence to the development department and the city staff. I can, you know, I can't speculate on why they voted that way, but clearly, the comprehensive plan talks about neighborhood expansion, so...
You're done.
Yep, I, my time is up.
Yeah.
Do you have my information?
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's a legacy, you said.
Good, thank you. Are there any other comments?
Kirsten, I guess, did you talk to this lady?
We talked in a different context at one point in time, it actually mattered a different thing. But, yeah, okay, so I would like to answer the question briefly on why, at the outset, you can't just do a corridor with rezoning, so that, I hope that brings some clarity, it's just that the whole, there, there are cities where you can rezone partial lots and create strips. We don't do that in Pickwa, it's not the way the zoning code is set up, everything has to be along property boundaries, for the most part, that's, that's the way it would be done. If you wanted to rezone different pieces of land, and maybe, you would, basically, you would be back in that subdivision process, you'd be splitting off pieces and then rezoning at that time with a plan in place, that's a possibility. So, I can answer more questions about that, too.
How do we address her concerns, though? Because I think she's got legitimate concerns.
May I attempt to address them?
Yeah.
Because we addressed these just a week ago. So first of all, when we talk about adjacent property, Forest Products is already adjacent to that property that's in dis, being discussed. There are six businesses on Looney Road currently. So light industrial in the city, or light industrial in the county, it's light industrial is what's already existing there. When we talk about runoff and pollution and all that, the city ordinances are not going to allow for that to happen. There are development codes that are not going to allow runoff, that's why we have city sanitary and city storm sewer that would be on that property, which is why we chose to bring it into the city, as opposed to developing it in the county. It would be less expensive to develop in the county, because their restrictions are less than what the city has. But we're trying to do what we believe is the best to the community, and develop it within the city, with the city ordinances and standards. They spoke of the residents, honestly, there were four residents out of the 30 that are affected that showed up for the meeting, so I don't think that we should over-dramatize that. I also know that Gary has expressed everything he just shared with his planning board, and every other person on that planning board opposed his position. So, I'm not sure exactly then what he was quoting about what we talked about, turning down builders. I can tell you that we have been asking builders for a good part of five years to come and join us in Indian Ridge, without success. I am a member of the Western Ohio Home Builders Association Board of Directors, and I sit with these guys every month, and I just, two months ago, went around the room and inquired if there would be some that would come help build in Indian Ridge, and I was rejected by all. So for public record, I want to know that we're not restricting growth in Indian Ridge. Again, as a developer, that would make no sense, but, then again, we understand that comments get made without really being thought through. The other thing on this is that I will share with this group, is that this is owned right now by a family who was born and raised in Pickwa, Ohio. But we're all getting older, and we've already done some divestiture of Teeters Real Estate Investment Properties. We will continue to do so, I just lost a 50-year-old brother-in-law to cancer. We will begin to sell off properties as we all get older. Right now, you're dealing with people in the community who care about the community, who put a lot of time in this community. If we end up selling this off to a New York developer, a California developer, they're not going to care about the concerned citizens or the commission... not going to care about the concerned citizens or the commission. They're going to be concerned about making profit on land. So, as I said in the planning meeting, we've already turned down some opportunities for production housing. We didn't feel like that was the right fit for our community, especially out near Indian Ridge. We are going to be very careful in whatever we do with that property because it affects our $4 million investment as well. So, any other questions that I can answer for you?
Just the, she, I understand her concern about having, like, Ford put a, a, a plant or gasoline storage facility or something there, and that would affect her quality of life. I mean, that's important to me as well.
So, I agree. I, I would, I would agree to that. I, two things I would say to you. I'm born and raised, my entire life, in Spring Creek Township. When I was a young lad, there was nothing beyond the river, east of the river. If we would have not done that, we'd still be, we heard these guys constantly complain tonight about growing Pickwa, bringing in jobs. Well, we got to develop land to do that. And part of the reason we don't, we had people who had land but wouldn't sell it. So, you got somebody here who's interested in developing, we need your support.
Can I ask a question?
You have to, no, 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 we can't just ask questions from the audience. You have to come up.
Any other questions through the commission?
No, sir.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
As a City Pickwa resident, Valerie Mulliken, Pickwa Clayton Road, um, my question to Rob would be, um, would there be the possibility of a compromise in creating a buffer to protect her property from such runoffs and things like that? Because I have to be honest with you, I'm concerned about annexation, my direction as well, into Washington Township. So, it is a real concern because I moved where I moved for that same peace and quiet to be, um, undisturbed, much like this young lady over here. So, I, that would be my question. Is that a possibility?
Good question.
Once again, Rob Alexander. So, um, first of all, I think you need to realize Washington Township is a long way from the big resources in Pickwa, which we've long since not developed, which is I-75, the railroad, the river. The, our goal is to develop where we believe our other communities, north and south, have really focused, and so that's our goal. As far as a buffer, there's a buffer requirement already in city code that will require us to make a buffer between those properties. Also, remember, we built those homes for all those people. I'm going to go really far out here for you and let you know that two of my daughters live right up against this property. So, I, I got to go home and sleep, and Mama ain't going to be happy if Papa puts a factory in the daughter's backyard. So, um, I've also got some of my best friends that live along there. We're not going to do anything that we think is going to devalue property in Indian Ridge after we've worked 10 years to bring the value of those properties up to where they are. Hopefully, that answers the question. Thank you.
I just want to speak to the code. Um, so, the, uh, in the code, there's something called transitions. That's going to occur on the, let's say, you're developing the whole thing. That would occur on the east and south side of the site, wherever it's butting up against a residential zoning category. On the north side with the agriculture and on the east, on the west side, basically at any property frontage. It's not called a transition. There's, there's a setback requirement of, I believe it's, generally, it's 25 feet. If you go into some of the more intensive things, it might tell you to go back farther. And then, what there would be along the frontage is a landscaping requirement. It's something that you wouldn't see in some of the other, um, industrial development because it was never required in the past. So, we will have tree, like, it's, I believe it's every 40 feet shade tree has to be planted, and there's going to be some thick ever, not evergreen necessarily, but shr, evergreen shrubs mixed with, you know, some kind of flowering plant. I'm not saying that that's enough or that changes anything for anybody, but that's just what it would be if you developed naturally to the code. I would say, just to clarify, the property is already annexed into the city as agriculture, and it could stay that way, if you preferred, for the time being. And you could, you could go with a plan to replat, and you can, you can work that way. You can also rely on some of the, um, the, the restrictions that are in the code, too. So, say there is somebody who wants, you know, you want to subdivide, and we want to, you know, head to Snodgrass and do driveways out there, but the road is not conditioned for that, then we wouldn't allow that subdivision to go through until we had a plan in place for everything to, for, for services to be brought there, which is why I think you're really going to see the, the entry-exit on Looney. Because you just have everything available right there at this time. So, those are considerations. I, I understand the concerns completely, but I also think there's a, there's a certain amount of protection. Of course, it's not going to be the same thing as if you had rezoned it to some lighter category.
What kind of infrastructure is there?
Um, so, you have, uh, as Ms. Fisher referenced, Looney Road is, of course, built up substantially more along that road. You also have the, uh, you have water, wastewater, um, and stormwater that is closer to being connected there along Looney Road as well. So, you, a developer is going to want to have all of those things present before they would come in and build something substantial like that. I also just wanted to note, some of the things on the use list are, um, they are by right uses, meaning you don't have to go back to planning commission to ask for permission to build those things. Others, like a fueling station or, um, mini warehouse self-service storage facilities or some of the more high-impact types of industrial development, you do go back to the planning commission for a special use approval for those things. There are some forms of manufacturing where you would not. And the, the purpose of that with code Pickwa, when we discussed it, it was to encourage those developments. So, you, you do have kind of, there's no doubt that there's tension here because, on the one hand, you want to develop these manufacturing centers. On the other hand, we want to ensure some protection for the neighbors. So, it's a balancing act here to, if you want to rezone it to this category, to make those things happen. And that happens sometimes with the next step with planning. You could use zoning to protect if, if that is the will. It just depends on, you know, and what, um, what it appears to me with the comprehensive plan is that the Looney Road corridor was meant to be a, an expansion area, not for neighborhoods, but for perhaps a variety of, of uses, including job-creating uses like manufacturing. I'm not saying that the comprehensive plan gave total guidance for a whole 119-acre tract because it doesn't get that granular. Those are things that you decide as, as they happen.
Thank you.
Kristy, one more thing, just in response to Rob. Thank you, and I appreciate what you said about the buffers and letting us know about that. And, but what I also heard is that it could, sorry, Kristy Fisher, 801 West Snodgrass Road, is that it could become in the plan to make Snodgrass Road be able to handle heavier traffic as well as semis, even though there would be a nice buffer zone with some trees that would be lovely if it was happening, right? I get that. And then, I understand what Rob's saying, that he has family that lives there and all that's warm and fuzzy, but no matter what, the principal uses are still the principal uses. So, those are still available for him or the developers to choose from, even though you're saying that you wouldn't choose some of them. I get that. That's just Rob's good word, and I don't really know Rob, so I just want to say that, you know, he could still choose, they could still choose any of these things that are listed on here, which some of them seem extremely detrimental to not only my life around the farm, um, but I'm, and I'm not the only farm owner, person that lives there. Obviously, those people aren't here, but I'm sure that they would not be happy with Home Depot or Lowe's in their backyard, or fuel storage, or a greenhouse with shining lights all, you know, all the time. And I don't know if they would choose to do that, but it's on the code. All right. Thank you again. I appreciate your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Any other comments? All right. So, do we have a motion for this resolution?
I'll make a motion on resolution number R-92-23.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Grissom?
Aye.
Mayor Pearson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Vedder?
No.
So, it passes with three votes. The resolution, or, okay. On ordinance.
Okay, so this resolution is passed. Resolution number R-93-23.
A resolution awarding a contract to Double J Construction, Inc. for the downtown tree replacement project.
Good evening, Commissioner. I'm Bob Grazer with the Engineering Office. I'll be submitting this, um, request for, this project consists of removing and replacing the street trees on Main Street from the Ohio Indiana Bike Path to Green Street. There'll also be subsequent repairs that will be done to the, to the curb and sidewalk. Electric outlets will also be done so that we can have uplighting as a part of this project. That will not be the complete, um, project in total, but it will be the beginning of our downtown improvement project that will be happening later. We had one bid from Double J Construction, uh, and it's $150,000, $979.40. It includes a 10% contingency for this project.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commission?
Uh, Bob, the, the budget and amount of $600,000, is that for the complete project of which we're using 150-plus, 151 for partial use, or?
Yeah, this will be the, the, uh, complete project includes additional work that we're doing as far as part of the design that we're doing with OHM right now. Okay. So, this is to get it kicked off, uh, to start on getting those trees taken care of downtown that we've had some problems with, uh, trying to make some, uh, changes to our downtown's trees that we've had down there that are, they're cycled out, ready to be changed out. Uh, will also be a part, separate from this project, we'll have, a company will be removing the trees and the stumps prior to Double J doing the work. It's a separate part of the same project.
And to continue, the $600,000 is a part of the 23 budget?
Yes.
And so, that if, if needed or available, we could move into the next part of the project with money already appropriated?
Yes, we already have with OHM and doing the design for the downtown improvements. That's correct. Thank you.
Any other comments? No? Comments from citizens?
Tom Homan, 1803 Nicklen Avenue. Could you, uh, could you please just explain what you meant by, like, the trees are cycled out? I guess I don't understand what, what happened to the trees, if they need to be replaced?
So, those trees are over 20 years old, and we get to a certain point of a street tree has its limits, and it's also causing a great deal of infrastructure problems with the curbs. Uh, the grates are being popped up, or actually having ADA problems with some of the trip hazards are being caused by that. So, it's a, a problem we have in our whole downtown area. So, those trees need to be replaced and changed out. Also, they're an invasive species that we'd like to get rid of as well and do some different plantings or non-invasive trees within our downtown area.
Gotcha. All right. Are any of the, the new trees, are they, maybe like, they, they grow more steadily or don't get as big?
So...
Was that a consideration?
The, the ones that we are actually doing are actually been recommended through a landscape architect. So, each tree-street area will be a different variety of trees, so we have a little bit of diversity throughout our town. We will not have one species, uh, through the whole city. All right. Thank you. Thank you.
And this will help resolve the bird problems that we're having, too, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And the species, these tree species, I take it that's been taken in consideration?
Yes, that's correct.
We've heard about the bird problem quite some time. Former mayor, um, I can't think of his name, Hudson, uh, would come up and address that issue quite often, so glad to see that's getting tackled.
Good evening, Commissioners. Lorna Swisher, Executive Director of Main Street Pickwa. Yes, let's get rid of the trees. Uh, not only do they attract birds, um, but they, birds leave stuff behind, so let's get rid of them. And, and secondarily, and possibly, in my view, more importantly, um, the trees are to the point that they are, um, preventing, uh, folks who are driving up and down Main Street from seeing the signs on the businesses. And, um, smaller trees will definitely help with that situation as well. So, um, would strongly, um, ask you to consider, uh, passing this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I would move the approval of resolution, uh, resolution R-93-23 for the downtown tree replacement project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Resolution carried. Resolution number R-94-23.
A resolution awarding a purchase order to Graystone Construction for the purchase and installation of 40, of a 41-by-70 bright-span Atlas L8 Series salt storage building for Public Works.
Good evening, Commission. The building at the Public Works Stores and Road Salt Inn is over 30 years old. It needs to be replaced. Um, we would like to replace the old wooden barn with a new bi-span storage structure. Uh, the bi-span storage structure will be purchased through Graystone Construction through the Sourcewell Purchasing Program Contract. Uh, Graystone Construction will install an L8 Series storage building that will be 41 feet wide by 70 feet long. The building will be placed where the current salt barn sits on our property. Um, a hot-dip corrosive prohibitive galvanized steel frame will be installed on concrete gilled, drilled pure foundations. A polythylene fabric will be placed over the frame covering the structure. The fabric covering, covering the structure and the main steel framework will have a 20-year prorated warranty. Um, eight-foot-tall precast concrete bunker L-shaped panels with corrosion inhibitor will be installed inside the framework to store all the road salt. Uh, Graystone has installed, uh, fabric storage buildings for over 20 years, completing over 1,300 structures. ODOT has several fabric buildings, buildings storing salt vehicles and equipment throughout the state of Ohio. Uh, ODOT down in Troy, for example, has two, two of these structures at their Troy outpost. Uh, the new salt storage building will allow for us to store approximately 980 tons of salt, uh, and that's 200 tons more than we can currently store right now. Uh, the expenditure includes a 10% contingency and came in under budget. $175,000 was appropriated in the 2023 budget to build the new salt barn, where we're cresting, uh, approval to spend up to $154,819.50 for the new salt barn. A photo of what the building will look similar to, along with the scope of work, can be viewed in Exhibit A. Uh, this has also been reviewed by the Planning Commission, and, uh, they reviewed, uh, they approved the salt barn, uh, uh, structure and the location.
Brian, does the, uh, tearing down of the old building, is that included in the, in the 154-819 mount?
Uh, we will tear the structure down in-house.
You'll do it personally? Okay.
Yes.
Feel like you'd enjoy that.
Uh, and it's a cost savings as well, yes.
Can you tell me what's the advantage of the fabric building? Is it just a...
The advantage to the building, um, back when salt barns were built decades ago, they, they typically went wood structures. What you found is that those wood structures failed, um, over, over a 20-to-30-year period of time. Uh, they rot from the inside out due to moisture and condensation inside the building from storing the salt. Um, the, the, these structures, this structure will last two to three times, uh, what our structure has, what our current structure has.
Why the metal over, just, or the fabric over, like, just regular metal-type barns?
The, so, the, the, the arch, that's just a, that's just the framework that goes over the top, and then the, the fabric is, is a canopy that protects it, is basically the roof, um, for the structure. Um, the, the oldest structure out there right now, uh, was put up about 23 years ago. It was just recently, um, inspected by Graystone, and the fabric is still in good condition, and they don't expect to have to replace that. Maybe when it hits 30 to 35 years possibly is when they would be looking at a replacement. Um, the current replacement cost for that fabric is similar to what you would pay to replace a roof that size. It's about $25,000 right now.
Okay. And it can withstand... Okay. And it can withstand, uh, wind and all that?
It can withstand, they can withstand wind up to a hundred and five miles an hour.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Um, just when we're looking at, you said replacing at the same area. There's, um, looking towards the future, you know, twenty, thirty years. Um, is there any concerns with that having to be relocated at any future point, or?
The, the beauty of using this type of structure is that we can take this structure with us if we were to relocate. Or it could possibly stay there as well if a new owner would like to utilize that for maybe storage of something else other than salt.
Any other citizen comments? I move that we adopt resolution number R dash ninety-four dash twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion, motion carried. Time for public comment. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the City Commission regarding agenda items, issues, or to provide information. Comments are requested to be limited to five minutes, and specific questions should be addressed to the City Manager's Office.
Melanie Walker, five-two-six North Wayne. First of all, I want to thank you all for your time that you put into this, because I know it is not a beautiful job every day. So, but there are days that it is. Um, and the information I wanted to share tonight was that Third Thursday is this week. And if you've not been to a Third Thursday event, well, this will be our first one this year because of the rain out. Um, this year, or this week, this week, it is a combination of, um, the nonprofit fair that we got rained out on last week. So there'll be a lot of different organizations there sharing, and it's also, um, a history event also. So there's two things going on, and I just wanted to share some of the things that's going on. The Civic Band will be there, of course. Um, the library does a big Pokemon thing. I'm learning about Pokemon now, um, but there, there'll be different events where you can catch Pokemons and different gifts and that. The kids' street games will be out. There is, um, an exciting air, they're going to teach you how to make paper airplanes. And, um, there'll be prizes for, um, getting them through the, the special halls. It's, yeah, it's, I mean, and they, they'll provide everything for you. So, and it's in the two blocks, the, the four hundred and, uh, it's our block and the block that referees is in. So those two blocks, and it's after the farmer's market. So I just wanted to share because we've, we've not had a lot of people come out, and it's a great opportunity to see what's going on downtown.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
And in the event of rain, the Civic Band concert will move to the Pickwa City Intermediate School. So that, that decision will be made early enough that folks can respond and change the schedule.
We are not going to have rain.
That's right.
Appreciate that.
I agree, no rain. I'm Valerie again with Operation Veteran and Carrierover Support. Um, a couple of things. One, um, I would like to, I talked to, uh, Paul earlier today, and he recommended that I talk to Cindy, but I wanted to make sure I got this on the record. Cause I asked about doing this, uh, several years ago, and, um, it didn't go anywhere. So, being a representative of a veterans organization, I find that it is very important that I have our community on board, supporting those men and women who have served our country, and, um, every one of you in here has been affected by a veteran in your life. And we have a whole lot of veterans in Pickwa, and we have a whole lot of veteran families lineage-wise. I would like to discuss at some point with the city, but I want it on record that I would be interested in helping the city of Pickwa become both, uh, a hidden hero city, which is sponsored by and supported by the Elizabeth Dole Foundation that supports veteran caregivers. There are currently five point five million in this nation, uh, estimated. I'm sure there's a lot more, and they are hidden. Because we do what we do. I am a veteran caregiver. I take care of a totally disabled veteran seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and I've done it for a lot of years. And we don't get the support that we need, and as a hidden hero city, we would be able to bring, um, we would be able to bring light onto those people. And not only veteran caregivers, but the beauty of being a hidden hero city for the Elizabeth Dole Foundation is it brings light to all caregivers. Those who are taking care of a loved one that has maybe Alzheimer's or a disabled child that is totally dependent. Caregiving is hard work, really hard work, and I think that it would be beneficial that we would consider doing that, seeing as how there's not even two hundred cities in the nation currently as hidden hero cities. I'd like to see Pickwa on that mark. The second opportunity that I wanted to discuss also, um, comes from, uh, George Washington, who created the Purple Heart in seventeen eighty-two. It was the first decoration that, um, fostered goodwill among combat veterans and their families. And, um, I would like to see the city of Pickwa become a Purple Heart city. We have some very notable Purple Heart, Silver Star, uh, Medal of Honor winners or recipients, not winners, God, they're not, they're not winners. Uh, recipients in this town. Um, and if nobody saw the Dayton Daily News today, there was a beautiful article about the Gentilly Park that is being developed in Kettering. Don Gentilly was born in Pickwa, Ohio. We don't have a big park. We have a statue. Keep that in mind when we talk about our parks in the future, but most importantly, I think about that as, as, um, as I think about the Purple Heart city. So I would love to work with you, Mayor Pearson, and, and Paul, and anybody else from the city. I'd like to see us get recognition for both of those. The other thing is, thank you for mentioning the downtown event. Operation Veteran and Caregiver Support, um, accepted the invitation to participate in that. So we will be downtown, so anybody who's interested in learning more about who we are, what we do, and how we get it done, we will be down there, and we are excited to be there on Thursday night. The final thing I wanted to add is, um, I have packets for veterans that are from the Dayton VA Medical Center. They are to help veterans get enrolled in the Dayton VA Medical Center, but they are also, this is very important. There are also informational sheets in here about the PACT Act. These sheets are, uh, information of, for veterans that served in Vietnam and the Gulf War, which started in August of nineteen ninety to present day. Um, these packets, or this information on the PACT Act is very, very vital. There are timelines on this. It expands service-connected disabilities, and we have a lot of veterans in this community that are not hooked into the Dayton VA Medical Center, and they are not familiar with the PACT Act, and it is really important that they get this information. They review this information both with their, their personal doctors, as well as a county veteran service officer. Um, we have a couple of new ones down in Troy, and it is, it's imperative that, um, that veterans look at their eligibility for service-connected, uh, compensation for serving in, in Vietnam and the Gulf War. So, um, if anybody wants further information on that, you can contact our office at nine-three-seven-five-seven-zero-six-four-six-zero. We'll be happy to get you the information. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Valerie. Anyone else?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi.
Larry Hamilton, eleven oh four Maplewood Drive, and also the owner of the Randolph and McCulloch Freedom Struggle Complex at six fifty-five North Main Street. And here's your why news or lose question. Why did I make mention of my business in association with the coming observance of a landmark anniversary in twenty twenty-four? Oh, the answer is, next year will mark the sixtieth anniversary of the passage of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, and the year after the sixtieth anniversary of the Voting Rights Act of nineteen sixty-five. And I would just like to stipulate that I would be Pickwa proud to collaborate with anyone desiring the passage of both by honoring Pickwa Congressman William Moore McCulloch. Jackie Kennedy wrote of McCulloch, "Your integrity under such pressures is what makes our political system worth fighting for and dying for." Please forgive the emotional tone of this letter, but I want you to know how much your example means to me. It is a light of hope in an often dark world, and one I shall raise my children on as they grow older. But our children aren't being raised to admire integrity, to honor truthfulness, nor to value an inclusive historical narrative in a political environment that exploits cultural divisiveness, legislates to censor and burn books, and trivializes, misinforms, or rewrites history in a manner that our children can simply ignore that which their parents are uncomfortable with. The next category of our news or lose game is what? And as much as I would love to talk about Pickwa illumination of William Moore McCulloch and collaborate with Pickwads in elevating his stature, the political recognition of keeping it real is to look at where we are at, on the threshold of these important national landmark anniversaries. If we continue to raise news or lose questions, a who question might relate to these Ohioans who are playing a game with our democracy in raising the passage from a one person, one vote, fifty-plus-one threshold to sixty percent required for passing a citizen-initiated constitutional initiative. In the past, citizens could correct faulty signatures over a ten-day period, but if issue one passes, that will change to what? No time. In the past, citizens were required to get five percent of voters in forty-four counties from the last election. But where will that requirement be if issue one passes on August eighth?
Every county.
All eighty-eight of Ohio's counties. Dr. King's sacrifice was the reason Pickwa's William Moore McCulloch was able to display his principles and show his political courage. Dr. King preached his last sermon on remaining awake through a great revolution. How would you rephrase remaining awake to the dissatisfaction of Governor DeSantis and his Republican supporters? Stay woke to the, to the coming revolution. Republicans should stop playing games altogether, and Ohio voters should just say no on issue one. Thank you.
Larry, I'd like to work with you on something for, uh, William McCullough. So come to the next diversity meeting and bring whatever idea you have, and we'll see what we can do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going south, six sixty South Street. I've been Pickwa for years. I used to do a lot in Pickway. Pickway, nobody wants to come to Pickway no more. We have car shows in Pickway. You have sixty cars. I go to Burbana, seven hundred cars. Used to be Pickway had a heck of a car show downtown. Somebody stopped it. I heard the city, I don't know. Why don't we bring something in town for the families? But then you got this new crooked handle coming town advertising, have a damn Facebook. Come in and sit along the river and drink. People see on Facebook, they ain't gonna bring their kid in this town to do that? No. Mine, I don't drink or nothing, you know. I don't care what they do, but you know, we gotta get in this town. You guys might not think I don't care about this town, but I care about this town. I want it like it used to be, and somebody ain't doing the job. I ain't gonna point no fingers. I ain't gonna say no names, but, you know, some people been here thirty-some years and ain't got a thing done. They ma, they made it worse. Everybody says, "We wanna be like Troy. We wanna be like Cindy." Cindy had a car show at the park, five hundred cars at the park. Troy has one downtown. Takes the whole downtown. We have one in Pickway and get a hundred cars. And I left, cause the guy that run, a lot of people left because of him, cause they was telling us where to park, and he come up yelling and screaming and cussing, "You can't park here," and that, and people said they ain't coming back this town because of that. We gotta get people to come in this town. This town's gonna be a ghost town. I'm old. I'll never see the town like it used to be. I'll never see the world like it used to be, but I still care. If I didn't care, I wouldn't bitch all the time, and I bitch a lot. Ask my ex-wife, she'll tell you. But, you know, it just don't-
I know you care.
It just, just don't make sense to me. This town used to be, people come in this town. Nobody wants to come in this town. I mean, it's okay to have bars. I don't drink, but don't have them get on Facebook and come town, drink along the river. We don't need bars along the rivers. Out there, people get drunk and wreck and kill somebody, or drown in the river, which we ain't got enough water to drown in the river. But, you know, when we gonna wake up and realize the city needs something, this town, bring people in this town. I mean, that guy said they built forty-eight houses in nine years. Not even very many houses. Huh?
Since twenty fifteen, yeah.
Not even very many houses, in my opinion. Houses, that's growing awful slow to me. Forty-eight houses in nine years? It's awful slow. I mean, I ain't no rocket scientist. I ain't smart. I got common sense. Always have. You don't, only the guy that can listen to me is him, but I've known him for-
Know and use since, wow.
And I ain't trouble like people think.
You're not.
I ain't, I just tell how I feel. This town is going to pop. It's the people running it. You should listen to the people once in a while. You should listen to the people. The people should run this town, not eight people up here. You know, when you do something, you should have a vote on it. You, if you eight people vote the way you want, and you got a hundred people out here who vote the way they want, so who wins? They should override you people. If we didn't care, we wouldn't be here, people. That's what I feel. If we didn't care, we'd let you do whatever you wanna do. I mean, it's just, it's just, you know, I, I hear a lot of things. I get on eBay and check, you know, that's where I found this stuff out. People, people call me, and people come and see me. I, I was over in a restaurant. People talk to me about what's going on in Pickway. Make me feel like an asshole, period. How people talk about this town that I live in, that don't wanna come in this town. I mean, just so much going on in this town out there. Nobody, you know, nobody, nobody got their eyes open. Say this guy's doing a job, or this guy's doing a job. No, we just paying a hundred and forty thousand dollars a year. If he does a job or not, we just keep paying him. Somebody gotta look and see who's doing the job in this town, to straighten this town up. I can't. I'm too old for this shit. I'm too old, and one person can't do it. One person can't do it. And like, you know, at first, man there, it didn't get long, but I felt sorry for the guy, really. After taking over somebody, after thirty-four years, let everybody do what they wanted to do. I kinda feel sorry for the guy, but that much. But, I mean, you, you take over, you know, carports. Can't have a carport now.
Can.
No, you can. They stopped it in two thousand and three, and I got in an argument with somebody about, I just, I told you about. They started this in two thousand and three. He applied one in two thousand and fourteen. The city gave him one because he was on the commission, and he tell me that. And we got into it yesterday, but-
Really?
Yeah. Bill Vogt's his name, if you wanna know his name.
I know who it is. I knew you talking about.
Two thousand and three, they started this. Two thousand and thirteen, he got one. He can keep his now. He gave him a choice. I'm, I want a carport, and they gave him one because he was commissioner. And one of his buddies went there and got one, and they gave him one. And I tried to go get one when Huffman was in there, cause Bill Vogt told me to do it. He would give me one. He wouldn't give me one.
Thank you for your comments.
We all breathe.
Thank you.
We all breathe.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioner. First, I'd just like a point of clarification. There was some crossover between zoning and zoning code enforcement and streets, for just one example. When you look at the street levy, the street levy, there's, there's two funds that we've used to cover street repairs and capital improvements. That has nothing to do with how zoning operates and the, and the revenues that are generated. They're two different sources, they have nothing to do with each other. That point being said, I was gonna give you an update on the pavement management program this evening, and so, again, another point of clarification, you know, the street levy talks about resurfacing, and resurfacing is basically a one-size-fits-all approach to a melon fill application of asphalt. What we've done is we've taken a step further and created a pavement preservation plan where you get more, more of your roadways taken care of for about the same amount of money. And so, this year is a kind of a launch of the pavement preservation, starting the week of July twenty-fourth, pavement technologies is scheduled, and this is all weather permitting, to start spraying Reclamite Asphalt Rejuvenator on the streets that were identified on the map. Reclamite basically goes back in and rejuvenates the existing asphalt that when it's laid at three hundred and plus degrees, it burns off some of the bituminous content, and so it breaks down a lot faster, and by using Reclamite, it provides a longer lifespan of the asphalt, and it's a lot cheaper treatment than waiting until it gets to the point where you have to do a melon fill. Phase two will be completed by Strouzer, and that's the tentative start date in August. That'll include capes seals, micro surface, crack seal, and again, those are all identified on the map that Brian had put together for Public Works. This is applying the correct pavement preservation treatment at the right time on the right pavement, instead of just going in and milling the road off three inches and putting three inches of asphalt back. What we're, what we're finding out is, as we get our pricing on this, is that we're doing about three to four times more pavement preservation than we would just melon fill, and so more streets are getting touched and actually providing a longer lifespan before they cycle out. So as this goes on, and Brian, you'll have to do this over the next ten years, 'cause I don't think I have that in me, but over the next ten years, the program, as we lay it out, should touch every single street in the community with one type of treatment or resurfacing at some point. So we're getting way more streets done for the same amount of resources we would otherwise. Lastly, the alley resurfacing is scheduled for August, that'll be done in-house by our own paving crew, and they'll just continue to do that as far as they can until the budget, the budget no longer can support asphalt, asphalt expenses, and then they'll kick it back off again next year. And then in September, we're looking at, we've been talking a lot about Main Street and the planners and the delineators, geez, it's been thirty months now since I've gotten here. And so in September, we're looking at a start date to have the traffic, the traffic on Market Street, the one-way traffic reversed, and correcting the left-hand turn out on Two Main Street, and so that's, that'll take place sometime in September, early October, but we will be, you know, documenting all this and taking photographs and pictures, putting on social media so people understand that, and especially with the pavement preservation, because it's something that's not usually seen here and hasn't been done, so we'll be demonstrating that through, you know, taking video and posting it to social media and really explaining what's going on in the neighborhoods. That's in my report.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Chris?
Hey, I wanna thank John Richards and Rhonda Mekstraw for their years of service for the city. Appreciate working with them when I was a police officer, and appreciate all the hard work and time and effort that they put into their job and their dedication to the city. Like to thank Jeff Grimes right back there now, he cleaned up that whole back of the, he actually got the chairs out and he's put them away just now, so I'd like to thank him for that. Like to thank Debbie Stein, this place is awesome award that she's been handing out. If you haven't seen it, go to her website. There are a lot of nice residences in the city, and she acknowledges them, and she takes her own time to do that, and we appreciate what she does. If people didn't see the announcement, the city manager sent us something today. There's an article out about a kid-friendly, family-friendly business that is gonna spend about a million dollars in the city of Pickwa at the Pickwa Center. It's called the Hero Day Action Park. It's gonna be at the Pickwa Center. I, I hear a lot of negatives, and so when I, I hear the negatives, I wanna combat that with, yeah, but this stuff's going on as well, and I, I just wanna accentuate the positives. There's a lot of positive stuff out there. I have a question for our law director, or maybe it's not necessarily a law director, but it would probably go to Smeesing, Mr. Smeesing. Are carports totally illegal in the city of Pickwa?
I think Gerson would have me.
Gerson, do you know that or not? Because I thought that they were not. They just had to be built according to standard.
I am a carport connoisseur, so we do not allow metal carports that pop out of kits, if that makes sense. So those are a no, and, and, but that's not all a carport can be. You can make a carport out of residential materials, and I help people do that. So you, you can do that with, think like a park shelter or an extension off of your house, or other ways you can get a carport under a roof, or, or, I'm sorry, a car under a roof. But what comes out of a metal kit doesn't look residential, or, or at least that's what the consensus was that I heard, and so those are continued to be restricted.
Sure.
And that, that basically started with the residential design standards that were passed in two thousand eight.
Okay, thank you. And for our law director, in reference to the rental inspection program, will there be a citizens' board type that will review these things, or we just, we're gonna use the BCA?
That would be the administration's decision on whether or not.
So I'll jump in there, I'm sorry. Yeah, so the Board of Zoning Appeals would be the body that would hear all those, yes.
All right, just so that, we want regular citizens that, that are citizens of Pickwa to sit on a board that would overlook something like that.
Yeah, that's, that's always, in, in the code enforcement sections, all of them have the right to appeal to the BCA.
Yes.
The BCA hears their decision. If they don't like that, they can actually appeal to the common police court from there.
Yep.
That's a, it happens occasionally, and that's what it's there for, to make sure it's an oversight committee basically for the administration.
Would there be opposition? I know, I know we have another reading, but would there be an opposition to sit down with some people, as long as it was a peaceful meeting, to discuss some of their, I mean, you're addressing, I read the...
I speak for myself only, but I've sat down with the, you know, the board of realtors, they've called me, and we actually have a third meeting with them. Really, nothing has changed in the ordinance with my discussions with them. I explained to them why we did things a certain way, the attorneys, and they kind of understood why. We also talked to a landlord, Mr. Smeesing, myself, and Paul, all three of us sat down.
But from the original, it has changed.
You know, I, I don't have an issue talking to people, and they're reasonable.
Yeah.
But I don't know, at this point in time, I've heard about every argument for and against, you know.
Have we changed it?
Oh, it's changed probably eight times. I don't know exactly, but you, Chris had one time, dates of every time it changed. I know it was at least six, and we've changed...
And the latest version is available for people to see on the website.
We've taken out the utility portion, we've taken out, you have to tell us who the tenants are. We've, we've taken out quite a bit in there and restructured it. I changed how the inspection part is done. There's some that thinks, and they, they go, "Well, we're gonna fight the constitutionality on that one." I'll tell everybody right now that I got that from City Line Michigan, which had, had their statute challenged, and it was upheld by, well, basically the U.S. Circuit Court of Appeals upheld that statute. Our language is identical to that statute when it comes to the search. Additionally, people should understand that the search part is permitted under the, search warrants are permitted under the Ohio Revised Code.
Administrative search.
An administrative search warrant, and we've done that before. We really don't want to do that. We want cooperation with the landlord. We don't wanna, wanna go into people's homes unannounced, we don't wanna do any of that. The worst thing in the world is to have our code enforcement exposed to someone who's startled by us going in there, so even if we get a search warrant, we're going to notify the landlord, "Hey, you need to let us, we got a search warrant, you need to let your tenant know, we're coming at this time." It has to be through the ordinance, I think, specified, we have to do it between eight and five, which is reasonable time, Monday through Friday. We would certainly contact any landlord if, once we've got the search warrant, and hopefully they would cooperate with us.
So the rental inspection program...
And we don't wanna have to do that, we hope the landlords will cooperate, generally speaking, but...
The rental inspection ordinance was in this latest packet. It was dated June twentieth, but all the updates were included in this latest one. Am I correct?
My understanding is the June twentieth was the one of the last commission meeting, and that was the final version.
So it was included in the packet, it is up on the website. It's not, they have, no one has not seen the ordinance, the ordinance is out there, anybody can get a copy of it.
Yeah.
If somebody would like my copy, I'd be glad to give it to them.
Where the people that were here that said, "Oh, you have to read the ordinance," you don't read the ordinance, you read the heading, you read the ordinance number in the heading. It's been that way for fifty years, and that's what our charter says also.
Wanted to make some clarifications there.
No, that's fine, I appreciate that.
And I, no, I appreciate you clarifying it, so. We want open, we want participation, and I know people aren't happy, but some are. I mean, I, I've heard this week more, more positive phone calls about the pro, the program than I have negative. Got a lot of emails from the same source that are against it, but I've heard a lot more positive phone calls this week than I've ever had, so.
And regarding the GF...
I want everybody to have a say.
And regarding the GF Bailey thing that came up, the city has worked with them in the past. I'm not aware of any contract with them currently.
Was there a plan though? I thought there was a plan that we were going to...
At one point in time, there was discussions with GF Bailey, and there was discussions in selling the property to them to redevelop into housing units and things of that nature. Look, I, I'm not the, the development director, and I don't get involved in every single issue. I don't believe currently, and the city manager indicated that, I, I don't know where that stands currently, I don't know where that is. I have not seen a contract on my desk. As far as I know, that property still is in the city of Pickwa name, and I just wanna clarify that.
I want that cleared as well.
Adding into that clarification, did you say that property was conveyed to the city at no cost?
What it was, was, it was an exchange. So when the hospital, the city owned the hospital property, when the, the school wanted to build there, the city reached an agreement with the hospital to, to exchange properties. So the city got the Bennett property, that was school property before, the city took over that property, and the school received the Bennett property, or not, the, the hospital property. And that's how the, the hos, or the school ended up where it was at. They wanted the school centralized, and that was the best place that they could find at that time to locate it, and they thought that was an appropriate place. And the city cooperated with them. It was, it was the school and the city working together at that time.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
And they still work together.
So, to me, I, I think, I'm just trying to get the best and most accurate information out there so everybody understands. I mean, we hear one side of it, I want the other side to be out there as well. I want people to come to these meetings, and I'm glad everybody came, whether they were angry or upset, whether they were happy with it or not, everybody got a say, and that's, that's the democratic process. That's how it's supposed to work, so.
And I think people need to realize everything they read on the internet is not true. I know people think it is, and they'll hear things. I think the best thing, if you have a, I was just at a commission or council meeting yesterday in Covington, and people came up and were saying things to the manager there. I think the best advice I can tell anybody, if you hear something like that, you believe it's true, call the city manager and ask him, or call the development director and ask them, and they will explain it to you. I, Paul's always been very approachable to people, and I think it's, I think for people just to go on and say, "Oh, well, it was in the newspaper, it was on a website," it doesn't mean it's true. If you really wanna know, call the city manager up and ask, ask the city manager.
Said you could research that yourself, and just go to the auditor's website.
Yeah, the auditor's website is there, it's difficult to find, I was trying to locate it, but I, I do not recall even going to the PIC at this point, I think it still is in the city of Pickwa name, but I, I could be wrong, it could be at the PIC. And just so, clarifications on the PIC, that's an entity that's controlled, it's a quasi-public entity, it has city members on it and public members on it. And the purpose of the CICs or PIC, there's a lot of purposes, but the purpose is for development in the city for, and it allows the transfer of property, and also allows the ease of transfer of property than it, than it would if you had to left, left it in the city's name. So if you had a developer that was going to come in, and let's say the Pickwa owned that, and they're gonna put a ten million dollar condominiums on there, I'm just throwing out a number, I'm not saying there is, the, the PIC corp could sell them that property, and in some respects, selling it at one dollar may be a very smart move, because you're going to get real estate taxes, income taxes from the people that live there over time. So for people to say, "Oh, you're just selling it for one dollar," if they sell the property for one dollar to somebody, it's because they've been, they've also been given a guarantee that they're going to put in structure that's going to bring tax revenue into the city or an improvement into the city that we can be proud of. I, I think, you know, I deal with these folks on a regular basis, I don't know everything. I'm not the development director, economic development director, I'm not the city manager, but I can tell you, these people do work hard here to try and get industry and business in here.
Yeah. I, that's all I've got, I, I appreciate that, so thank you.
Mr. Vetter.
For those of us who are old enough to remember...
There's no more public comment, I'm sorry, it's commissioners.
We're done for the evening?
We're done with public comment for the evening.
I can't, I can't watch this.
No, no, not until next meeting.
Yeah. Some of us are old enough to remember the mess the hospital was for years, and tied up in all kinds of issues, and, and eyesore, and all kinds of problems, and, and looking back, we should be thankful that we have a nice school facility there, and that worked out, but for years, that was a tied up and all kinds of issues, and was not pretty, and the neighbors around there were not happy.
No, and that, that's an example where the school and the city cooperated...
Absolutely.
...together, and, and got something really good out of it.
Absolutely.
Both of them. I mean, the Bennett Street property is a nice piece of property to develop in the future.
But the interesting part of the Bennett property is, it's not as big as most people think it is. For years, we had kids running down to the river on recess, and they really were on Miami Conservancy District ground, not on school playground, and so it's, it's a, it's an interesting, smaller property than many of us believe is really the case, and it'll be interesting, hopefully we can develop that, and, and that's part of my word, and I'm hoping we can do something really good there, but that property is, is not that deep, and, and so that hopefully will come out as we talk about the development. One comment from me, as I, I misspoke several weeks ago in reference to the current cost assessment of the Hans Pavilion, and I thought that had been posted on the website, evidently had not been, and I think as of today, it has been, and so I'm thankful for that. Thank you.
I'd like to recognize Rhonda and John as well for their years of service. I think somebody made a comment tonight about our mission as city employees, and I'll stand up by them tonight and forever on what a good job they do, whether they live in the city or not. For example, I just took a new job in Dayton, I'm gonna give it, you know, my hundred percent, just like a lot of our city workers, they do a phenomenal job for this town, they really do, from police, fire, utilities, I see them work their butts off, and I'm just, I just wanna make sure that people are aware of that. Additionally, Kathy Verhots reached out to me, said Kathy...
Additionally, Kathy Verhots reached out to me, said Kathy Henning donated flags on the fourth, over five hundred, over on the Nickland Boulevard. So I wanna thank her for that. And then I, I do hear a lot of negativity and I just, I just think that come spring, we had almost all of our boards filled. We've, we've talked about it. It takes everybody within the city to make a community. We've talked about making Pickwa our city, not the city. I'm just saying, the city's doing this, the city's doing this. It takes everybody. And like Mr. Lee said, I appreciate people coming out, whether it's good, bad. We gotta work together to make this town. The, the worse we talk about it, the less people will be attracted to it. And it's not just five people that can make a city. It really does take it all-inclusive. Third Thursday, bringing those types of events together, that's amazing. We try to have events down on the town in the quad and maybe ten, twelve people show up. You know, we really wanna try to be as inclusive as we possibly can. We've been taking in comments, making adjustments to these policies. I think that's what takes cooperation and working together. And that's only gonna be the ways to make things better, so I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. I appreciate the continued comments and working together, see what we can do to make it better.
Chris, can I also say one other thing since you were on that? For the city to transfer the Bennett property to the PIC, the commission would have to vote on it. I, I'm not aware, I mean, I'm not saying that it's not possible. The PIC also is an, is a, a government board. Their meetings are public or they're quasi-government form. Their meetings are public and they're open and any decision on that has to go through that board also, so.
Apparently, Frank, there was a resolution in two thousand and twenty-two. I just saw this online where we, it's, let me see if I can get it. R dash twenty-two dash twenty-two in which GF Bailey, we were gonna convey that. I don't know if we ever voted on it or not.
No, he has not received the property.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no developer's agreement in place.
All right, but there was a resolution that was, that had come before us.
Correct. And Mr. Bailey had been here several times to demonstrate the product that was gonna be, you know, constructed there. And they'd never developed and so we've just been holding it, not we, Pick has been holding the property.
I, I just wanna be clear. I mean, I saw that real quick and I'm like, hmm, I'm just gonna clear the air, make sure.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, do you have anything else?
Nope, you're all right.
I just wanted to thank everyone for coming out tonight and a special thank you for the years of service of Rhonda and John. Lots of time, energy, dedication, serving the city of Pickwa. I don't have anything else. I hope to see you all Thursday night.
Yes.
It is not going to rain.
No rain.
I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good evening.